Again. Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 13th, 2025 North Hampton Student Advisory Council Meeting. I'm Jean-Louise Shara, Chair of School Committee, and I'll be presiding this evening. This meeting is being held both remotely on Zoom pursuant to the modification of the state's open meeting law for the pandemic and in person in the community room at JFK Middle School. This meeting and all participating will be audio and video recorded. And did we start that recording yet?
Yes.
The following members are participating on Zoom. I believe it's myself, Jean-Louise Shara, and Member Hennessy at the moment. And I'm going to-
Recording in progress.
I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Cassie to please call the role of the school committee.
Mayor Shara?
Present.
Ali Gacy?
Present.
Member Weizenfreund?
Present.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Present.
Member Stein? Member Hennessy? Member Miller?
Present.
Member LaBounty?
Present.
Member Agna?
Present.
Member Davis?
Present.
Do you have a forum?
Great, thank you. So we will move on to the student presentation, which I believe is on flex policies. And welcome the students who I can't see yet, but there they are. Welcome.
Hi, we're the Student Advisory Committee, and I'm Cielo Knox. I'm a freshman.
I'm Scarlett Bowman. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Anna Lucia Boom. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Zar Usman. I'm a junior, and we're all members of the NHS Student Union.
And we'd also like to welcome new member Weizenfreund to the school committee.
Oh, thank you.
Can we have the slideshow?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did y'all get any pizza? I didn't order it, so I probably shouldn't be offering it, but-
I ordered it, and you can order it if you want.
Yeah, we've been offered it.
Member LaBounty.
Okay.
Whoops. Sorry.
Wow.
Okay. Should I move it over?
Well, we could have two.
Janine, the mic?
Oh, this isn't- Sorry, too much going on on my screen here.
No, it's totally fine. Okay, our presentation today is about the flex policies at NHS. Next slide, please. Okay, so what is flex? Flex is a 35-minute-long block in between first and second period where students choose a classroom to get help on work, get homework done, meet with clubs, make up tardies, and lots of other things. Many students use flex to limit the amount of work they have to do out of school while keeping the same academic rigor.
So the reason that we need the new flex policies were because there weren't any consequences for not going to flex, and as a result, students were not signing up for flex. Teachers weren't taking attendance because there was no reason to, and students were going wherever they wanted, including in the halls or out of school. And this created safety concerns because if there was a fire, or fire drill, or a lockdown, it would be impossible to account for everyone in flex.
So last semester, if a- Oh. So students signing up for flex would, they use MyFlexLearning, which is our website, where you have all the classes listed, and you sign up before, typically the Friday before the next week. And this last semester, when a student didn't sign up for flex, they would be put in the cafeteria's flex, and hundreds of students would not sign up. So there'd be hundreds of students signed up for the flex, but only 50 to 75 would actually show up to the cafeteria. This semester, if they don't sign up for flex, they will automatically be placed into their first-period class, so they will stay there until flex is over. This makes it easier for teachers to keep track of students and to- It helps the safety concerns that were present last semester. And students are able to sign up for flex up until five minutes before a flex starts.
Okay. Yeah. So the big change at the start of the semester was that if a student didn't go to their flex the day before, they'd be signed up for the auditorium, and they kind of have like a little check-in, like a detention, but it was like, it was like they were trying to find out the reason that they didn't go to flex. And the, what the intention by Mr. Tagliari was that this would be phased out as the semester got going, and more and more students started signing up for flex because they understood the reasons. This change is very much marketed to us students as like, you all wanted to keep flex, and we want you to have flex, but we can't keep flex if it isn't safe. So basically, it's been very positive change, and it's been phased out because they're able to check in with people individually if they don't go to flex now, and they don't have to have these auditorium-wide meetings. But it, at the time that this slideshow was made, the auditorium-wide meetings were the way they were being held, and there were a lot of issues there. But like, kids who were absent from the entire school day would be put in the auditorium and like given like a detention speech when it's like, okay, you just, you were sick. You had a doctor's appointment. So, and like sometimes, like if a teacher just accidentally marked them absent, they'd be put in detention. So there were a few issues, but now that this is being phased out and they're checking people individually, it's not, not as big a deal.
At the end of last semester, a survey about flex was sent out to the student body asking if we should keep flex at all, if it's helpful, what time it should be, and how long it should be. 536 students responded with 98.7% of students saying, we should keep flex, and it helps them get work done and improve their learning. The majority of people also voted to have flex stay in the same time slot. These responses were utilized to improve flex for everyone.
So I kind of already talked about this a little bit, but there's, there's some mixed results. We talked about the flex detentions, and another like big issue is that there's like a cap on how many students can go to each flex. So if students don't sign up and they are placed in the Period One Teacher's Flex, there might be like students who don't want to be there and who don't end up going there in that flex, taking up slots on MyFlexLearning. So students who are actually trying to sign up can't go to that teacher's flex. And now that teachers can't like switch them in directly when the period starts, that's like kind of a little bit of an issue. But now, over 97% of students are going to their correct flex, the ones that they're signed up for. So that's a big improvement, whereas last semester, we would have like 400 students not sign up for flex each week. So now that number is much, much lower.
And I also say that there, I went in the hallway like a couple days ago, and there is no one in the halls. Everyone was in their classroom where they were supposed to be.
Yeah, like last semester, there were like so many people just walking around in the hallways. And like Anna Lucia said, it's, it's not like that anymore.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you. I'm having a hard time seeing him, so-
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Member LaBounty.
Oh, okay. I'll use my hand hand. All right, I forgot you're not here, so I can't. Just raise me. So it sounds like it's working better, even though there's might be a couple of issues. Can you sign up? So if you know you're going to need some help after, can you sign up ahead? So if it's Tuesday, can you sign up for a Thursday flex?
You can sign up for flex for the rest of the year at this point if you want to. You can sign up as far ahead as you want.
Oh, okay. So it's not like, I gotta get in there today and sign up quick, I, you know?
You could also change it. Like after, like if I sign up for tomorrow, and I'm like, I want to go to Ms. Todd Hunter's, and then during Period One, like halfway through the period, I'm like, oh my gosh, I really need some more help in pre-cal, and then I, and I can switch into Ms. Warren's flex, like as long as it's like not like the last minute of the period.
Okay, great. I just wondered how flexible flex was, so that's great.
Yeah, it's pretty flexible.
Good.
Member Gacy?
Oh, that was my question, was whether you had to go to the same flex for all year, whether you could switch depending on your needs. But you answered that.
Great.
Are the, oh, are there any, I saw in the slides, it said sometimes they're oversubscribed, so you can't get to the one you want. Is a problem frequently?
Yeah, that can definitely be an issue, especially with people signing up ahead of time, and how you can sign up for a lot of flexes. Like they can fill up really fast. So that's still an issue, but it was also an issue last semester. So I think it kind of depends on the teacher. Like, I, I sometimes just ask my teacher, like, hey, can you switch me in? But it can- Oh, I, or not in flex, but you can message teachers on MyFlexLearning. So I've been doing that, but it's still kind of an issue for like if there's like a 15 cap, and there's tons of different classes.
So I've been at NHS for five semesters now, and that has been an issue in every single one of them. Like, it's particularly interesting in bigger classrooms when like you really, because like the cap is like either like 15 or like 25, but like it automatically auto-selects 15. And if you know anything about the class sizes at NHS, you know, we do not have 15 students per class. So, so a lot of times that would fill up really, really fast. And if it's like the band room, where it's like that room can fit like 100 people, definitely 15 wasn't like a good cap. So, but I, but this semester, they've definitely tried to be more proactive about setting a better cap. So it isn't 15 for most classes, it's 25 for most classes, I believe. So they're kind of trying to fix that with that. But obviously, you know, in the realm of NHS, where you have like 25 students per class and a teacher has three periods, then, and there might be situations where it still gets full. And so that, it's, it's, it's just kind of an issue you can't really fix entirely. People aren't always going to be able to go wherever they want all the time.
Member Agna?
Thank you for this. It's really interesting. I hear the 97% improvement. That's fantastic. Is that reflective of most of the culture or the climate at the high school now? Is that, could you characterize that, or would you rather not try to?
Can you just rephrase that question a little bit?
Well, I think there's, there'd been some concerns over the few months about bathrooms and, you know, sort of general order, I guess, at the high school. Is that something you could comment on, or if you'd rather not, I understand too?
I would say that I didn't sign up for flex once last semester. Okay? Because I didn't need to, and I knew that, because I didn't need to last year. This semester, I have signed up for flex every single day except the day I was absent. So I would say the students who are going to change by, who were like, who were already doing, I was, you know, I wasn't, I was doing AP Physics every day in flex last semester. I just never signed up to go there. So the students who are doing work in flex are still doing work in flex, they're just doing work in flex, and people know, and it says where I am on a sheet. But like the students who are vaping in the bathrooms are still vaping in the bathrooms. Nothing has changed there. I mean, it's, that's a harder thing to remedy. The students who care about detention are gonna not get detention, and then the students who don't are, are gonna get detention. Thank you.
Dr. Bonner, did you, were you raising your hand?
Yes, so Member Miller has her hand up, and she's not on Zoom, so I wanted you to be able to recognize her.
Thank you. Yes, please, Member Miller.
My question is, if you're in a club and you also need help in a particular class, how do you make that decision?
A lot of times, people will go to the club that they usually go to, but most people aren't in a club every day of the week. And so there's still, there is still time to, to go to the classes that you need. And also, a lot of people don't go to any flex clubs, and there's also clubs after school that you can go to if you need the help in flex. And if like you need to reassess something, a lot of times, like I'll just be like, oh, I'm sorry, I have to reassess my test this flex. Like, I'll come next week.
Some clubs do like a rotating basis, like one day in flex, one day after school, like on like a, like bi-weekly thing. And also, like the reassessment period is two weeks long. So if you can't come to flex on like three out of those 10 days that we have, then that's like, it's not like the biggest deal. And as far as like getting help for tests, I feel like it's just kind of the same thing. I mean, it's something you have to navigate, right? Like, just depends on individual student priorities. But I don't think it's a big issue, as Cielo was saying.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I can't see.
No.
No. Okay. Is there anything else that you would like to add? Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was just excited, so I started clapping.
Yep.
Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn the Student Council, Council, I mean, Student Advisory Council, excuse me.
I'll second that.
Led by Member Agna, seconded by Member Davis. When you're ready, Cassie, roll call, please.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weizenfreund?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Great. So we are adjourned from Student Advisory Council, and in a couple minutes, we will be back for the school committee meeting. Thank you.
Do it from the, just go down one at a time, moving through?
That would make sense.
That sounds good to me.
I think so.
So the, I'm just looking for my, oh my stuff. So the first norm is utilize brevity to use our meeting time well. Watch airtime. Speak and listen. If you agree, say so and move on. Any comments? I love you's brevity.
Why is that one important to you?
Because our meetings are so doggone long. And, you know, I know it's important-
Somebody needs to mute, I think.
No.
What is it? Sorry?
I know it's important because that we recognize our constituents, but sometimes it seems to me when we go around and everybody has to say, thank you for your presentation, can't the first person say on behalf of the school committee, we really like it, and not just do that? You know, looking for other, I don't know if there's other ways that we can cut down, maybe not speak to an issue more than four or five times. Let's go to a vote. Miss Agna?
I think we could, we could call a vote. One, I mean, I think that's something that we could just do and hope that it doesn't interrupt people in their thinking or their wanting to say something. But I also know that there must be some people maybe pressured to say something about everything, to show that you're representing your constituents. And that's a tricky one, I think. But I'd like to try to allow for a few comments and then move on, if we could.
I also think that for some of us that are not as vocal all the time, it may appear as if we're not paying attention, or we're not engaged, which is absolutely not the truth. But in the efforts to keep our commentary down to the necessary minimum, many of us choose not to say something.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on brevity? Okay.
Just a reminder that my suggestion was to only have one person speak on this at the beginning of the meeting, not to have everybody speak on it. But-
Okay.
Okay.
I think that means we're, we're ready to move on.
Moving.
Moving on, we have the Student Representative Report. Welcome again, students.
Hi. So our first update is that we are three weeks into the new semester, which seems to be going well for a lot of people. Next is spring sports registration is happening right now and closing March 5. And our actors and musicians are rehearsing for the musical Hades Town, which is happening March 13 to 15.
And some fundraisers that are going on at school right now is the Ultimate Frisbee Team is having a candygram sale for Valentine's Day, and the sophomores will be having a bake sale tomorrow morning. And a student union, not fundraiser, but more of a-
Fundraiser?
Yes, fundraiser, is our merch, which none of us are wearing. But we, we have some new designs, some updated, they're updated, and some new different types of clothing, like some quarter zips and baseball caps and polo shirts and a, an escort. Our, the link to buy them is in our Instagram page, and if you buy it, it will be delivered to NHS, and we can bring it to you at the next school committee meeting.
Great.
And it closes on February 16, the store. The Instagram handle also is @NHSStudentUnion. And a more school-focused one is scheduling is starting to happen for next year. Each grade is having meetings with their guidance counselors. The freshmen just had theirs this week, and after break, sophomores will have them. And then I assume juniors the week after that. In these meetings, the guidance counselors will go over new changes to the program of study and other important information regarding scheduling. And that's it.
Great. Any questions or comments for the students?
Thank you.
I have, I have a minor question. How likely is it that the, that the musical will sell out?
No.
Has it ever sold out before?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so maybe folks should get their, their tickets early.
Yeah, the musical has sold out before, so it's always a great idea to buy tickets in advance. But yeah, that's-
Great. Any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you very, very much for that report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to public comment. And we take public comment in person and over Zoom. There is a sign-up sheet for public comment in the community room, and those on Zoom, if you wish to make a comment, please use the raised hand feature, and we'll try to alternate between those in the room and those on Zoom. You can always submit a written public comment, which is equally part of the public record at northhampton-school-committee@northhampton-k12.us, and it'll be sent to all school committee members. Before you begin your comment, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. The school committee does not respond during public comment, as it's the public's time to speak. So while your comment should be directed to the school committee, you'll understand when they are not responded to. There's a limit of three minutes per person unless language interpretation or accommodations for a communication disability have been requested, in which case then the time limit is six minutes. And the timer will be set to ensure that everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, but you have no obligation to use the full time. According to the rules of procedure, the school committee receives public comment for a maximum of 90 minutes, and we will be getting public comment at 6:40 PM. So, Member Agna, can you call on people in the room since I don't have the list and can't see folks?
Okay. The first person on the list is Kimberly Schlichting?
How do I turn down the?
You did well.
Oh, are you timing, or should, should one of us time?
If one of you could time, that would probably be helpful, but otherwise I could do it.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Go for it.
Hello. So I am Kimberly Schlichting. I'm from Hadley, Massachusetts. And I've been a Spanish teacher with North Hampton Public Schools for 24 years at both- And I've been a Spanish teacher with Northampton Public Schools for 24 years at both NHS and JFK. I'm currently at JFK. And I just want to talk about what this year has been like. This year has by far been the most difficult year I've ever had. This year has felt nearly as unpredictable and hard as my first year of teaching. Because of budget cuts and decreasing languages to every other day with the new schedule at JFK, the other French-Spanish position was cut and I was left as the only Spanish teacher at JFK for this year. I have three grades to prep for, sixth grade Spanish, seventh grade Spanish, eighth grade Spanish, and eight classes over a two-day rotation. At the beginning of the year, I had a whopping 180 students. 180 students is a lot. With so many students, it has been challenging to form relationships, to learn names, to keep up on grading, to respond to caregiver concerns, and to be a good teacher that lives up to my own standards. Then I have to cut myself some slack and realize that I've been put in a hard situation. Back in September, a few weeks into the school year, after Keddie learned about just how many students I had, she didn't know until then. She did her best to be sure that I didn't get any more new students as the year progressed, which has been good. So good for me, but, you know, bad for students that want to start at JFK in Spanish. So traditionally, there are many new students to Northampton Public Schools that are able to start in a world language, but not now. So also, some students had taken the language in seventh grade, were not put back into eighth grade Spanish at the second trimester. And some students that were struggling in English or math classes that had also always been in Spanish or world language classes, they were given the opportunity to have a period for academic coaching. So on the positive side, with Keddie's support, I'm down to 155 students. But that's still a lot. And on the negative side, the flip side, there are a lot more students who would like to be in Spanish at JFK and who are not able to. World languages were cut drastically last year, and this is a shame, because languages support so many goals of the good, well-rounded education. It's something that Northampton has been proud of in the past, and students deserve to have the chance to learn languages when they are young. I'd encourage more sport, support and reinstating another world language teacher at JFK. And as for the rainy day fund, the rainy day is now.
Thank you.
Next on Zoom is, Zoom is Cindy Mahoney.
Cindy Mahoney, is that?
Yes.
Sorry. Hello. Just having trouble with the meeting. I thought, so good evening. My name is Cindy Mahoney. I live at 77 Emerson Way. I'm also one of the board members of the Northampton Special Education Parent Advisory Council, although I'm not speaking on behalf of CPAC or the CPAC Board this evening. Many years ago, I spoke before the school committee about the high school late start time. While it's true that a 3:30 dismissal time is negatively impacting Northampton High School students, in the current political and physical climate, that issue seems very quaint now. At the federal level, we can count on Representative McGovern fighting to ensure that funding for IDEA remains and that 504 protections are not stripped away. We live in a community and a state which value education, however, we cannot be complacent. The recent NEEP scores show a disconnect between DESI's press release touting Mass is number one in the nation, while the Globe's rated story on January 29th stated that the actual scores show students in Massachusetts and nationwide remain far behind their pre-pandemic years. Both the Globe and DESI sent that word this week about USDAO findings on Mass DESI special education failings. The Globe writes, "Massachusetts has failed to ensure local school districts are providing special education students with the services and protections they are entitled to under federal law. Special education costs are often cited as the budget busters, but we cannot blame students with disabilities for those costs." Again, I'll cite the Globe reporting on February 9th regarding school districts struggling, seeing we're on a downward spiral. Massachusetts school districts face another year of dire cuts. We are very grateful to have Senator Commerford and Representative Sabodosa working tirelessly at the state level on behalf of those with disabilities and district funding formulas and the state's education budget. There's also the Moon United for Our Future Coalition, which is seeking to reform school funding along with the state legislatures. At the local level, it's imperative that both the school committee and city counselors have a current view of what is happening day to day in our schools. Northampton citizens rely on our municipal leaders to preserve public safety, public schools, and public streets. But please understand, attending a concert or going on a tour is not enough. Please take the time and invite your city counselors to sit in the back of an elementary education room where a student is perhaps an English language learner. Sit at lunchtime in the JFK cafeteria and witness the social and emotional struggles unfolding. Take the time to visit a learning strategies classroom at the high school, where a student is still struggling to read because of years and years.
The time is up. Could you finish, please? Sorry.
Yep. I ask that you keep students with disabilities and those who are English language learners at front of mind when considering the upcoming budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person on the list is Kate Fontaine.
Can you hear me? How about now? All right. Good evening. I'm Kate Fontaine. I am the History and Social Studies Department Chair at Northampton High School. I'm also the Unit A Coordinator for the Northampton Association of School Employees. The understaffing in our district has been a concern for us, especially as it relates to the safety of students and staff. Recently, NAES leadership requested a list of injuries to staff. We want to emphasize that children's needs are not being met, which has resulted in unsafe situations. I would like to share with you the list of assaults that involved paperwork for workman's comp that staff have reported since the beginning of this school year until December 12th. We know that there are many more incidents in which the victim did not file workman's comp paperwork and even more incidents that went unreported. Teacher assaulted by human bites, Bridge Street School, August 28th. Teacher assaulted by human bites, Ryan Road, August 28th. Teacher assaulted, leading to a contusion, Jackson Street, August 28th. Teacher assaulted by human bites, Ryan Road, August 30th. Teacher assaulted, leading to a contusion to the face and neck, Jackson Street, September 4th. Para assaulted by human bites, Jackson Street, September 9th. Para at Bridge Street struck in the face and neck, September 12th. Para assaulted by human bites at Bridge Street, September 16th. Teacher assaulted by human scratches to the neck, September 17th. Para assaulted by human bites, September 19th. Para assaulted by human bites to the face and neck at Bridge Street, September 20th. Teacher assaulted, resulting in a contusion at Jackson Street, September 20th. Para assaulted, leading to a contusion to the head at Bridge Street, September 25th. Para assaulted, leading to a contusion to the, to the back at Bridge Street, October 10th. Teacher struck in the head, leading to a contusion, October 16th. Teacher assaulted, leading to contusion to the, to the face and neck at Ryan Road, October 17th. Para assaulted, Bridge Street, October 21st. Para assaulted, leading to a contusion to the arm, Ryan Road, October 23rd. Para assaulted, leading to a contusion at Bridge Street, October 24th. Para assaulted, leading to a contusion to the chest and ribs, Bridge Street, October 28th. Teacher assaulted, leading to a contusion to the chest and ribs at Bridge Street, October 28th. Teacher assaulted by human scratches to the face and neck at Jackson Street, October 31st. School nurse assaulted, resulting in contusion, Jackson Street, November 6th. Teacher assaulted, leading to a contusion to the nose, Bridge Street, November 12th. School staff assaulted by human bites, Bridge Street, November 20th. Para assaulted by human bites, Jackson Street, November 20th. Teacher assaulted, leading to a contusion, Bridge Street, November 21st. Teacher assaulted, leading to a contusion, Bridge Street, November 21st. Administrator assaulted, leading to a contusion, Bridge Street, November 21st. Para assaulted, leading to a contusion to the head at Jackson Street, November 26th. The list goes on.
Thank you.
We have a staffing and safety problem. My question to this body that's elected to oversee the schools is how are we going to meet the needs of our kids, protect the safety of all, and how are we going to fix this?
Thank you.
Next on Zoom is D-H-I-N. Please state your name and city or town.
Hi, I'm Pilar Hinckley. I am, I live in Northampton and I would like to speak on the teachers that were talking about how they're having to pick who in their classes were getting reading support. As someone who is dyslexic and did not get any reading support until sixth grade, I was not going to the Northampton Public School system at that point. I believe that it is really, really horrible to do that to kids as not only does it make it so that you cannot read, it makes it so that you are no longer confident in your reading even later on. Even at this point, I am still not confident in reading and sometimes I have to ask for help. And it, it's just really awful to do that to people. And I think that they, that it, I don't know. It's very, it's very horrible to do that to people. And I think that you need to fund enough to make all people who need reading support to get reading support and that you should not cut reading support or math support or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person on the list is Jennifer James.
Hi, good evening. I'm a parent of a child with dyslexia who receives services at the high school. I'm part of the Dyslexia Small Committee for CPAC. I'm not speaking as an officer of CPAC, but as a parent who is part of CPAC and I'm here to support other parents, who will probably be speaking tonight, who have younger children. What I'd like to say is that we know and you know that Northampton High School is graduating kids that can't read. And we're going to do it this year, and we're going to do it next year, and we're going to do it the year after that, and we're going to do it the year after that, unless we change the way we find kids that can't read and the way we service the kids that can't read. And this isn't about somebody else's curriculum or somebody else's plan. When we are living among these kids and you're on this committee and the city council runs the city, these kids belong to you and you're letting this happen. And I'm sorry, but you ran for an office that put you in that place. So as we go through the rest of this process of budgeting and talking about kids that can't read tonight, I want you to know that they have a face and they have a name and you've met them and you're going to keep meeting them their whole lives. And now is when we could help. So I really hope that what this body does and what the city bodies do is take that to heart and remember in this process that you're looking at these kids every day, you just don't know them and they're looking back at you. And when you step up to shake their hand at graduation and they don't want to shake your hand, there's a reason why. And if you're shaking their hand and they can't read, I think we should all be ashamed of ourselves. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Lisa Modinos.
Thank you, Lisa Modinos Florence. I'd like to start with a quote. "Allowing a student with a hidden disability to struggle academically or socially when all that's needed for success are appropriate accommodations is no different than failing to provide a ramp for a person in a wheelchair. My son is a high needs child at JFK. He's got an incredible team who are in desperate need of more resources, as is the case for all of our special ed programming, because our schools are in crisis, especially for our children, our children with IEPs. In fact, the number of children in our district with IEP surpasses the state average, yet you cut our budget two years in a row. Those cuts are trauma on the brains and bodies of our children who struggle to access the curriculum, engage with their peers, and feel a sense of belonging, especially during critical developmental stages. And that trauma hits the most marginalized and vulnerable the hardest, reminding us that budget cuts are an equity issue. Those cuts have also resulted in numerous IEP violations and DESI complaints. If the district invested in those metaphorical ramps instead of cutting them, much of this could have been avoided. Now, some might say a ramp would be an easy request, a one-time cost. But when a request for mid-year hires was put forth by Councilor Mayore in January to help even just temporarily mitigate the crisis for children and staff alike, the usual suspects voted it down. I'd like to share some quotes from your elected officials who voted against the hires. Quote, "I spent a lot of my life managing people running businesses and I know that I would not be comfortable bringing someone on for a couple of months. Schools are not businesses. Ask the teachers what they're comfortable with. A ramp for just a couple of months is still better than no ramp." Quote, "I'm not in favor of hiring staff for a five-month period. I don't think it's a very responsible way to address the current concerns in the schools." Responsible to whom? And these aren't concerns. This is a crisis. I know a lot of kids who would want that ramp for five months." From the mayor, quote, "There's no doubt that this would relieve stress for now. The key point is unless we can find a way to build this into the budget and have it recur, then this will become a deficit. This is about more than stress, mayor. This is about access and inequity. It's clear that equity under the current budget is impossible. What will you do to mitigate this now and in the future? What is the plan? And it cannot include more cuts." Lastly, quote, "I candidly wonder about the quality of folks who'd be available mid-year. This is clearly someone who has never sat on a hiring committee for public schools. This same counselor elsewhere said that she doesn't think we have a crisis in our schools. She doesn't agree with that. These are people who haven't stepped foot in our schools, who aren't listening to our teachers and staff, and they're denying ramps for our children. There is a direct and calculated attack on public education by so-called progressives in Northampton. So what are you going to do, school committee members, to counter this attack, especially for our children with IEPs and the staff who support them? What is the plan? And it cannot include more cuts." And to the public, as we sit by and watch public education being attacked on a national level too, remember to act locally in November and vote for those who will defend and not continuously defund public education in Northampton. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next person on the list is Garav Joshnani. Sorry, I'm sorry to not pronounce that correctly.
Okay. My name is Garav Joshnani. How does the accommodations work? If I have like two disabilities that would get me an IEP if I was a student, then how does time work?
Time works that it's increased, right? Correct?
Is that how it works? This is my first time here.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for spending the time to be here with us. I'm not a teacher in this district. I'm not a CPAC officer, just a regular guy. I'm here to talk about two things. I'm here to talk about my son's IEP and what I see as where this is headed. I moved here this past August. I moved to Northampton in part because I heard good things about the schools here. I was excited to have my two kids at Bridge Street and I've since learned the teachers are incredible, really, really wonderful people. My son is autistic and has ADHD. He's also a beautiful, brilliant person. When we got to Bridge Street, the school reduced the services he had at our previous Massachusetts school with no explanation, with no reason. Why would he need a para educator in his class three days a week and not the other two? They didn't know either. But they pushed it through. Matt Holloway was very helpful in increasing it back to five days a week. So you can imagine my surprise when last month I found out they had been violating the IEP, a legally binding document, as you know, every week and possibly every day this year. They had a para with him two days when it was supposed to be three, and they just didn't have anyone scheduled 30% of every week when it was five days. Again, this is illegal. This is what the school and the district had agreed was needed for him to access the curriculum five days a week. And I was lied to repeatedly in writing and verbally by an administrator who the teachers in our emergency IEP team meeting eventually had to correct. I understand it's a structural issue, so I wasn't as mad as I might have been. I thought this was fixed two weeks ago when they finally assigned a full-time para to my son five days a week, but then after one week, she was pulled back, reassigned with no notice or communication to us. I found this out from my son two days ago. And he's, she's since been replaced with a rotating cast of five different people. If you know anything about autism, you know that autistic kids depend on consistency and routine. This is the opposite. Suffice to say, this was only one of many ways that my son's IEP was violated. I have a pending complaint with the state, as you can only imagine. And I'm not the only person in this district, as you already know. Over the last month, I joined CPAC, went to my first meeting a few weeks ago, and I've talked to every neighbor I could. I've learned that my son's experience is common here. Every day, this district is failing to provide legally mandated services to dozens, if not hundreds, of students. These are lawsuits waiting to happen. Again, it's a fiscal issue. Why? Because the city has cut staff to the bone and even transferred- cut staff to the bone and even transferred out a large chunk of the Title I money that was coming into Bridge Street, which is not at all standard, hence the temporary waivers that our superintendent had to apply for. You with me? We are bleeding more students and money to the charter schools every year. We are taking away futures from students, specifically disabled students, poor students, and English language learners. When we have the largest surplus of all of our peer municipalities, the points of comparison that the mayor chose for her presentation a few weeks ago, I'm getting a civic education here in Northampton, $35.9 million, this is not just absurd to gut the schools. It's choosing to devalue our children and our futures, and their future, excuse me. It's choosing to move toward a downward spiral where failing schools not only bleed students out, but also, as maybe people will care about more, also bring down property values, which then guts future revenue, right? It's a spiral. We denied $500,000 to schools last month, but according to the slides from the city, we added $600,000 to the Climate Stabilization Fund in January, the same month, which is basically yet another capital fund. I hear students say they are being harmed in this meeting. We just heard from this young person with dyslexia. I hear teachers say they are being literally attacked, right? There is not enough staff for people to stay safe at their jobs. More lawsuits waiting to happen. I'm a parent telling you that this district is failing and harming my child. Your actions have harmed my child. I expect better. This is an election year, and I want to say that underfunding our schools is not, in the long term, fiscally sound. And most importantly, it is institutional discrimination and violence. Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Jess Terry.
Jess?
Hi, sorry. Okay, so I live in Northampton, and I am a teacher at JFK Middle School and have been for the past five and a half years. And I'm a teacher for the autism program. So I just want to preface by saying that I put in my notice of resignation today because I can no longer deal with physically or mentally the crisis at JFK Middle School. So, you know, staffing is not the whole picture. There are many other factors in the way that, sorry, I'm having a difficult time articulating myself, but either way, staffing really does overarch the problems that are continuing to happen at the middle school here in town. And I can really briefly explain to some parents that if your child is not receiving services, it's because there have been some extreme violent outbursts of students who are either not at all on an IEP yet, or do not have written into their plan, their service delivery grid, the sort of staffing that's required to deal with the day in and day out violent outbursts. So I had a student in my room for, up until December, late December, was destroying items in my room, assaulting teachers, assaulting other students. And that student did not have a one-to-one para. And because of his high needs and the fact that we have to keep him in district, that student has taken away other students' para educators to be with him one-on-one. So, you know, these are some of the things that the school committee and other council members definitely do not see it happening in our school because we're not openly talking about them. It's a bit of an embarrassment at times. And I have to say that just because we're so short-staffed for these crises situations, you know, today I was a one-to-one instead of teaching the classes that I teach. And by the way, I also teach four different classes. I teach two different grade levels of English Language Arts that require heavy modifications.
So your time is up. Could you finish the sentence, please?
Sure. So with all of the things going on, I cannot mentally deal with working at JFK anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who signed up is Melissa Macaborski.
Hi, I'm Melissa Macaborski. I live in Northampton. Jess Terry, I am so sorry. You have helped so many kids, and I am just crushed to hear that you have to leave because of the budget cuts. All right. Over the past year, thousands of hours have been put in asking the city to fund our schools. We've been writing letters, making public comments, and organizing protests. Unfortunately, the city has not been responsive to our efforts. Regardless, support our schools has formed and will continue to advocate for children for many, many years to come. Right now, our students' IEPs are not being met. We know about some of these violations, but not all. Which ones are we missing? Which students do you think are most affected? While our most vulnerable children suffer, we have spent money on pickleball courts, teenage mutant ninja turtle sewer covers, and overspent by millions on an old building, the First Baptist Church Building. Mayor, I think I can see you up there on the screen. Your policies perpetuate systemic racism. Your policies and actions promote sexism as you attempt to minimize the voices of the largest group of female employees in Northampton. Your policies harm refugees, English language learners, transgender children, and children of color. To any children or teen watching, if you feel unheard, forgotten, or have lost hope, please know that we care. We will continue showing up for you until you get what you need and deserve. You are worth it. There is still hope. We have an election coming up in November. Vote like your children's well-being depends on it, because it does. "All of our children," in the words of Tish Sarani.
Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Jacob Drew.
Hi, my name is Jacob Drew. I live in Florence, Massachusetts. I have three children in the Northampton Public Schools. My oldest child is a freshman at NHS. He has an IEP. I'm currently serving as a Special Education Parent Advisory Council Officer. However, tonight I'm speaking on my own behalf. Like many residents of our town, I've been following the crisis in our schools since last year, based on the numerous public comments in school committee meetings and town council meetings from teachers, parents, and other members of our community. It should be apparent to all, our schools are in trouble. What does not seem apparent, however, is that the people with the power to do something about this crisis believe that it's happening. Unless you think the parents who have spoken tonight and the parents who have spoken during many previous public comment periods are lying, it should be clear to you there is a crisis. Unless you think the teachers and staff who have come forward to describe the untenable situations in our schools are lying, it should be clear to you there is a crisis. Unless you haven't been paying attention, unless you haven't made an effort to see what is going on in our schools, that our children are falling behind, that IEP services are not being met, that children in dire need of tier-two support are falling through the cracks, that our students largely have not made up the ground lost during COVID, that our classes are too large, that we don't have enough para educators, that our district's reputation has taken a major hit, that parents of children with special needs are not getting the support they need, unless your eyes are not open to what is going on here, to what is so painfully obvious to so many in our community, it should be clear to you that there is a crisis. The trouble is, our elected officials don't often act like there is a school crisis. It is time for you to see what is so plain to so many of us. It is time to escalate this to the emergency that it is. Please listen to the people that are in the school districts, to the parents that are in the school district, to the teachers, to the staff who have come bravely forward to tell you what is going on on the ground and represent their interests, our interests, our district interests, as you were elected to do, and fight for the funds our children need to give them the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next person is Andrea Bertini.
Andrea Bertini, Florence, Mass. I want to share with this committee the following I-Ready scores for kids on IEPs from this winter. For all the kids in sixth grade on IEPs, 70% of them are below grade level in reading. Seventh grade, it's 63%. And eighth grade, it's 77%. I want to especially draw your attention to the eighth grade class. They went through the failed wins model. They had the failed Lucy Calkins and Fontes and Pennell reading curriculums, and then lost almost two years of school due to COVID as we stayed closed longer than most of the area school districts. There are people that continue to dismiss these I-Ready scores, say the kids don't try, or they aren't reliable. But why is it only the kids who do poorly are the ones who don't try? Why is it that this cohort of eighth graders has done this poorly since third grade on the Ames Web, the I-Ready, and the MCAS? Over and over, and year after year, this cohort has told us the same exact story. 52% of the kids on IEPs in eighth grade are three or more grade levels behind in reading. They are functionally illiterate in heading into high school. In what professional setting do the leaders, mayor, school committee, student services, and superintendent get to fail 80% of the kids on IEPs? 80% and respond with nothing? No answers, no plan. Can you imagine flying in a plane and the pilot coming over the loudspeaker and saying, hey, sorry, they cut our gasoline allotment, 80% of you have to get off the flight? That is how you treat our educators and our kids on IEPs. What does it say about you as a governing body and about you as our mayor that you can fail so many kids, continue to keep cutting our resources, keep cutting educators, keep putting the educators in fail-fail situations, keep lying to parents and families while hoarding this money and throwing away the future for these kids, and still keep your job? You have been doing that, you have been doing what the new Trump administration is threatening to do with federal money. You have the same exact spending approach and have had a three-year head start over Trump. Take care of the 1%, and the rest get nothing. You have been cutting public education for three years now. You have been laying off public school employees for three years. You refuse to put funding in the budget for a quality curriculum or invest in the reading interventionists to catch these kids up. Northampton has done nothing but cut resources and educators for this eighth grade class since they were in first grade. You and your supporters can continue to twist yourself into knots and justify this massive failure in your leadership as mayor and head of the school committee. You have veered politically so far to the left that you now sit squarely and unapologetically on the right. You, this body, and the district administration have abandoned our kids, and especially and tragically, the kids on IEPs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Maritha Wallace.
Good evening. I have tried to, I'm reading from my phone. And I've listened to several of these meetings, and this is what I would like to say. I have no idea what to say at this moment. Educators, parents, caregivers have begged, cried, yelled, to get your attention to help with the underfunding of our schools. Those words, up at this moment, have fallen on deaf ears. I don't know what to say. So what I will talk about is privilege. You all have had a privilege that students of color, students on IEPs, do not have. When we have told you that there is a crisis, we have been told, it's not a crisis because it doesn't affect my child, which is actually the definition of privilege. Because if you can stand and say that it is not happening, then what you are actually saying is, because it doesn't happen to me, it does not exist. I am here to tell you that there is violence at JFK. I have been on the receiving end of it. So therefore, it has happened. We are understaffed. To call out and to say, this is what's going on, is not divisive, it's not rude, nor is it mean. It is fact about what is going on in our schools. Now, with how things stand, we have ESPs that are supposed to work one-to-one to students, but now have to work four-to-one with students, and three out of those four students are actually one-to-ones. So we are putting so much pressure on our ESPs. I'm a delegate and the unit C person in our building, and I talk to ESPs constantly, and they are tired. We have something that is going on mentally and being able to cope with the fact that we don't have enough staff. I would challenge you. I would ask that you show up at JFK, not to go to a meeting, but to walk around the halls, to do what teachers do, to peek your head into a classroom with 27 students and no help. This is what we are faced with every day. And those teachers, who are awesome, I might add, are dealing with behaviors. There is very little learning that is being done. In closing, the rich nation on earth has never allocated enough resources to build significant school, to compensate adequate teachers, and to surround them with the prestige our riches justify. That's from the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. And I would just like to follow up with that.
Maritha, your time is up. If you could finish your sentence?
Yes. I would just like you to understand what we are going through. Come visit us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in person is Nathan Chung.
Hi, Nathan Chung, Northampton resident and city government employee. He is a member of the public. We've got to go off a little today. You know, I understand there's a lot of these real issues happening, but also it's not appropriate to demonize government officials and what the city school committee is doing in light of all the different data that's available. And some of this is what I brought, okay? I tried to use the city wifi. It doesn't work here, but here's some screenshots. This is a DESI data on teacher-student ratio. Last year, 10.4 to 1. That's for public schools. For Smith Folk, 8.9 to 1. And this rough analysis of para to student ratio, or student para ratio, is 5 to 1. And with the 30 teacher layout, which is very unfortunate, I understand, it now has gone from 10.4 to 12. So maybe it's underfunded, maybe it's not good enough, but I grew up in South Korea where there were 50 students in a classroom. So it's all relative, I understand. But maybe 12 is not good enough, so we need to reduce even more? Let's talk about it. In terms of funding, this is all public data. This is the FY25 city budget. City's operating funds that comes from property tax and our local revenues is $116 million total. Of that, MPS operating budget, not Smith College, is $41 million. That's 35% of the entire budget that comes from our local revenue. And you look at that, how many percentage of students are part of the Northampton population? I'm sorry. So 8% is the number of students as a total of the Northampton population. 2,500 students against 29,000 people. So you're talking about 45% roughly, or 35% roughly of budget going into 8% of the population. And that's not even accounting for the HR And that's not even accounting for the HR benefits, which is a separate category. And I haven't done a real calculation about that, so I can't say. I'm sorry, just not. And there is a school ethics code, and I'm just going to read that. It has been in effect since 2003. "Realize that our primary response to children, recognize that it is your basic function to be policymaking and not administrative, and to not play politics for your own benefit. Recognize and support administrative command, and refuse to act and complain individually outside of administration. Make decisions only after all facts, when the question has been presented and discussed." You know, the city budget has gone up by 8% from this year to last year, from last year to this year, to support the schools. Maybe that's not good enough, but as a total percentage of the population, or total percentage of budget, it is a significant number for me. And if that's still not good enough, let's talk about it. Let's see how we can increase it more. But to demonize city government officials because they're not funding enough, I really disagree with that. And somebody just brought the racist word.
You can finish.
Can I ask a thing? I mean-
Yes, finish your sentence.
I am biased, I understand. But as the only, one of the few only East Asian person in the city government, I have only respect and cooperation from city employees. The people who have said racist things to me are general members of the public on all ranges of income who have attacked our city government or myself based on my race. So, you want to talk about racism? You can ask me questions, but please don't throw that weaponization word to city government officials. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Meg Robbins.
Thank you. And Meg Robbins, Northampton, Massachusetts. And I'm going to leave my avatar up because, if you can see it, you might not be in the room. It really speaks for what I'm speaking about. Tonight has been an incredibly powerful speak-out by those people who are closest to our children, their parents, their teachers. The loss of Jess at JFK is breaking my heart. She's just one of many, and she's one of more who will leave. People who truly care about our children, who have the expertise, people who will grow old and retire in our district, who will know our children, who, as some of you who have taught and worked in this district, know the huge pleasure of seeing those children as young adults making a way in the world with the competencies and capabilities that our education system has given them. It's been, I know I've sat in your chairs, I know how you feel, and I know that you care about the children who are in front of you. I also know that there's a contingent, some of you, some who may be present in front of you tonight, who really feel strongly about dollars and cents over children. And I'm just going to remind you again that our job, or your job, as a school committee, is to provide for the children, is to set an example for what is the best practice that will result in those children, each and every one of them, leaving our system competent and capable to be at the adults that we will admire and who can make their way through the world. It's hard to follow up on the brilliance of what we've heard earlier. You may hear other dollars and cents arguments. Our budget is about priority. And I know you, as a committee, will make the right decision about recommending the funds that will support our schools and enable them to thrive and grow against difficult times because those children are the ones who will save us in the future. And I'm not speaking off the top of some sort of, you know, let's predicate what's here and what's there. It's true, and we know it's true. Each kid who doesn't make it is going to be a child who sits in our conscience forever. It's going to be a child that we could have saved. It's going to be a child who becomes disengaged with learning, who chooses another way to make their way through life, and who ultimately we have to support in another way as a culture and a community. I know that you can pull this off, and I know that you will work together as hard as you can to recommend a budget that best supports our children in the coming years and makes our public schools thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in person is Zara Osman.
Hey, second time tonight. I'm Zara Sfond, I'm a junior at NHS, I live in Florence. I think I came to my first school committee meeting when I was in 8th grade. And I really like all of you. I really do. I've worked with many of you. I, you know, even if like, we've had an argument, I really do like all of you. And I know none of you think budget cuts are good. I know none of you are like, "Oh yay, things are going so well right now. We're doing the best we can possibly do." I am a very loud person. I will be the only one voting against things they can tell you. I believe that when you're an elected representative, you gotta just, you gotta push as hard as people are telling you to push. And if you keep being told no by the higher-ups, then that's just the way it goes. And as long as people see you doing the best you can do, then it's no longer, it's no longer on you. And I feel like, definitely, definitely, some of you are doing that. I don't feel as if all of you are doing that. And I feel as if this community isn't working together with its elected officials. And I feel like, time after time, I keep saying, "Let's work together. We've got so many educated people in this community. We can really create a better solution that everyone feels good about. We don't have to spend nonrenewable money. We don't have to be arguing about what the actual statistics are because no group agrees on what they are." We've been trying to decipher what the actual money situation in the city is, and we have no idea because everything is so conflated. And I just feel like, I just feel like there's more that we can be doing. There's, if you want to meet with the student union, you know, we're always here. We can tell you about these issues. We've heard so, I just, I felt so disheartened tonight hearing these stories, hearing from Michlich Ding, who I had in 6th grade Spanish, and I loved that class. That class had like 10 people in it. So, it's crazy, 180 students, that's crazy. Hearing about these students with IEPs who aren't being met. And this is something that we've heard for months now. I've been at these meetings, we've been hearing the IEPs aren't getting met for months. And I'm really glad that we have like a specific instance that we can cite, like a multiple, because I feel like this is something we keep hearing, and I really hope that we can all listen and work with each other because that's just my main goal, is because I don't feel like that's happening, and that's why I don't feel like enough is being done. If I felt like we were all working towards a solution, I wouldn't have to come here every night. And yeah, so it's what, been like four years of me coming to these meetings? And I'm, you know, I'm a junior, I'm almost done, I'm like, "Oh, three more semesters. Can't wait." But, like, I'll still be here, and I'll still come back because I care. And I hope that you all care too, and I know you do.
Thank you, Zara.
Next one's in is Ben Tobin.
Hi. I just wanted to make a brief comment. I used to work at JFK and providing special education services, and have been following the movement. And wanted to really speak in support of providing more for these students who have disabilities, who are on IEPs. And just the kind of long-building issue of kind of correlates with it, literacy, having evidence-based instruction, having interventionists who are well-trained, who know the evidence-based programming, who have the experience, especially with very complicated cases, is very difficult to find. And it's something where, if there's not the funding, if there isn't sort of the resources being directed to these areas, it doesn't just affect those kids, it affects everybody. But the most vulnerable students, that's sort of a reflection of the values of the community, not necessarily the people who are going to be fine no matter what, but how these most vulnerable students and their families are treated. And I work as an advocate across the state now. And I was recently reporting in the Boston Globe. I filed the complaint with OSEP against the state for being out of compliance with special education law in general. And they were just found out of compliance in 10 areas, including Child Find. And that's sort of a, that's a statewide issue that affects lots of communities. And I see the same sort of issues pop up all over the place. So, I don't, I think there should be every effort to bring resources back to the schools, to bring expertise back to the schools. Sorry. To get, to get those resources back in the hands of educators, in the hands of students, and sort of get back on that track. And that was it.
Thank you. The next person in person is Quaverly Ruffenberg.
And I would also like to ask for an accommodation.
It's a communication accommodation, so is that-
Yep.
Okay.
I've said many times on the record that I'm autistic. I've said many times on the record that my children are autistic. But I understand, if you haven't been following all the city council budget talks, there's a lot of it. There's not a lot of progress. When I come and speak to you guys, I try to think about what would be helpful for you to know. Of course, it's not very helpful if you don't believe me, so I can only go so far. But what remains helpful, I think, to know and to understand are a few things. One is that the public is dissatisfied, by and large. Not everybody, but by and large. And not just with schools. They're dissatisfied with the budget. They're dissatisfied with the level of services they're getting for the money that they are paying. And sure, some people expect way more than is reasonable. I've heard that before, that people say, "Oh, my neighbor expects more than is reasonable." But I have never heard firsthand from somebody who expected more than was reasonable. And how do I know that? I know that because I spent the majority of my first year on council doing financial analysis, following the money, you say, in a colloquial way. And what happens when we follow the money is we see that fiscal stability plan shrink our city services, shrink our city budget, which includes the school budget, so that we could generate more free cash, which then gets put into reserve funds. That's the basic thing. It's creating one-time funds out of recurring funds. Okay, it's like an alchemy. You have a recurring fund, the tax money. You don't spend it, you don't even plan on spending it. You just leave it on the table like you never saw it. Then at the end of the year, it shows up because we didn't expect all that money to be there, right? Then when it shows up, you say, "Wow, that's great, that's a lot of extra money. I bet we could fund the schools." And they say, "No, actually, that's all accounted for. We have this plan, we have that plan, we have this policy. We were expecting that money. We have a use for it already." Okay, we don't, we don't come as soon as the free cash comes and gather and say like, "Oh my God, what do we do with all this money?" No, no, we immediately go through the policies and procedures to move that money where it was planning to move. Okay, and sure, some of the facts and figures are a little like, maybe we'll get 5%, maybe we'll get 5.6% as leftover. But we are hitting those targets. And what's frustrating to the public about working with this mayor, and it is about the mayor, right? Because you guys don't control how much money the schools get. Although I would encourage you to encourage city council and the mayor to opt in so that your vote is a meaningful vote. Right? Because right now, the way it works is when you vote on your budget that you want, if it's higher than what the mayor says she's going to give you, you can't have it. City council has no power to give it to you. So I would like you to make sure we opt into the law that came about around the same time Prop 2.5 came about, to protect schools. Right? This was a safeguard, but they made it optional for cities. You can have this safeguard for schools, but it's optional. And what the safeguard is, is it says, "School committee, which runs schools, has a funding request. The mayor, who runs the rest of the city, has a funding request. City council, you hold the funds. How are you going to divvy it up? Whose funding requests are you going to meet in full if they conflict? How do you want to have that wiggle room?" That's what opting in means. So I want you to try to find a way to tell the public it doesn't make sense to opt in. Nobody could last time. The city council said they just wanted more time to think about it, more time to talk about it, but nobody's talking about it at city council. Okay? Because the other thing the community is frustrated with is that we have singularly driven so much authority into the role of mayor through the charter review. And there's not a desire, there's not a political will or desire to change that balance. You might remember, one of the times I talked to you, I spoke about building a bridge. I said, "What bridge am I building? I build a bridge to constituents, I want you to build that bridge." I don't want you to build a bridge to a cocktail party. We can have cocktail parties later. We are advocates. We're not here to be friends. But if you find that your friendships are valuable, and you say, "Oh, Quaverly, the way she moves doesn't really work." I have a way that works. I have real relationships. Please use the relationships for that, for things like opting in, for things like speaking to your friends who also hold power, and saying, "Listen, the public, they really, I think they really do feel this way. I don't think we can just keep brushing it off." So, in short, when you follow the money, there is more money. And if you don't believe that, and I know some of you, I've seen some of your emails with constituents, some of you just don't believe there's more money. The public, more and more and more and more of the public are being educated every day. This is publicly available information. And there is a hell of a movement right now, like you haven't seen since 1981, in this town, to make sure that the public understands where the money is and how much money there is. So I suggest you take your time and do some of that homework and find somebody who can help you. And I know that we are a forgiving civil society, and that anyone in this room will be more than happy to show you where the money is. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Deborah Thompson.
Better? Okay. I can kind of see your head moving, Emily, that's it. All right, here we go. So, it's been more than a year now that I keep coming back for the same reason, and it feels like I've been pleading into an abyss. It's frustrating to me that little to no active work has been done by this committee to prevent this sort of Groundhog Day version of the budget season that's looming ahead. While I appreciate the efforts put forth by members Seraphy Cox, LaBounty, and Stein to do more, their suggestions have fallen flat into the void. I've reached out independently to some of you and heard promises in community meetings by Member Agna and Dr. B that you would push for more funding. Why is this push? You've heard the voices of struggling students, families, educators, and staff of Northampton Public Schools. You've heard us pleading for help. Classrooms are overcrowded, teachers and staff are spread way too thin. There are IP violations happening, and children with supportive education needs are told they cannot get services unless they're pulled out of academic opportunities and classes. This is illegal. I'll remind you again that it's a violation of full inclusion standards and least restrictive environment. The city puts forth a sort of facade of progressive values, opening its doors to those seeking sanctuary and promising to support them. Yet budget decisions and underestimates have caused harms to the students in our city. The mental health of our children and educators are in crisis. The constituency spoke up, rallied, and lobbied against these cuts. The harms that you have heard about tonight to our students, families, educators, and staff were predictable and avoidable. Teachers, staff, and any city of Northampton employees should not be made to feel like their salaries and benefits are a burden to this city. We've tried calling you in, calling you out, and we have begged you to put something on your agenda for future budgeting to offset next year's cuts. Nothing changes. I beg you again to put this topic on your agenda in a future meeting. Some private citizens have been working hard on our own to try to come up with some budget suggestions to prevent this continual cycle of harm to our Northampton residents. Please join us. I understand there are open meeting law guidelines, but we can work with a couple of you at a time. Just please let us help. It's maddening to watch irreversible harm happening to our children that could have been avoided. Would you stand by and watch your own child being hurt as onlookers do nothing, claiming it isn't really a crisis, while city surpluses go up to 11? What else do constituents in this city need to be do- What else do constituents in this city need to be, need to do to be heard and feel represented? I'm done, but in closing, I want to say something just Terry, if you're listening. I've never met you. I'm a member of the autism community in our town, and when people got your letter today, parents were devastated, not just for their kids, but the first thing they were worried about was you. They love you, and we're sorry to see you go.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Andrea Gido.
My name is Andrea Gido. I am the president of the Northampton Association of School Employees, and thank you all for hearing me and hearing all of these amazing stories. We really appreciate your listening, and it means a lot to show that you're listening when people are speaking. I've been at many meetings, and often elected officials are looking down or on their computer or on their phone. And I just want to thank you all because it was clear that you are looking and listening and listening to the stories. This is not about demonizing elected officials, and I know I've said this before. Many people, or I want to say most, if not all, have wanted to work together to help in this crisis, myself included. All of my members have expressed the interest in working together, working with the superintendent, working with all of you, and our city elected officials as well. It's not about demonizing. It's about disagreeing with budgetary decisions. And we can disagree and still like each other. We can disagree and still respect each other. Our schools are the only department in this city. I know we heard small percentages, right? How many children, the large staff to student ratio. We all know that those numbers from DESI count every single person in the building and divide it by every, every student. So it's not a 12 to 1 classroom ratio. So people that quote data that don't really understand it need, need help with understanding the way DESI reports that. But what is a fact is that our schools are the only city department that affects the highest number of citizens on a daily basis. Right? Every day. Because it's not just the students. It's their families as well that are affected by what we do. So if we count how many children are in the schools, and then how many people they live with, let's add up that number of citizens that are being affected. I know many of us today, as we had a delay because of the unsafe weather, myself included, there wasn't breakfast served, right? Breakfast isn't served on a school delay. Many of us took out food for our children that came into school hungry. That's what we do. It's part of being a community. It's part of caring, not just for children, but for families. The allocation this year has been the highest that it's been percentage-wise. That is true. And Mayor, we thank you for that. But it's not frivolous. It's not wasted money, and it's not being tossed away. Just one more sentence.
Thank you.
I would ask you all, what we need from you, you've heard the stories, please go and speak to our city councilors, because I know how you all feel about what the schools need. Please go and speak to our city councilors and the mayor, the ones who control the budget allocations, and come and visit the schools. I personally will take you on a tour. I personally will share and open up those doors so that you can see what our educators are working with and why we need to provide not just special ed services for our students with disabilities, but intervention services for our students that are on the cusp, that need that extra push. So please, let's schedule some visits. This mayor took city councilors to all the other departments. Come to the schools. We would like all our city councilors and all our school committee members, and I would be personally happy to facilitate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone?
Oh, there's someone else. Sorry, you can just step up to the mic and just introduce yourself and, and give your address.
Hi, I'm Brian Wilby, Ward 5, Northampton resident. I have three kids, two at Ryan Road and one at JFK. It's not easy to ask for help, and I think everyone's here today, or almost everyone here is here today asking for help. And so, thank you for doing that. It takes a lot of bravery to come up here, I think. So thank you. I like to think about things from sort of a common sense perspective, because a lot of times, things that I hear don't make sense. Let's not forget about the big picture, that we just went through a pandemic, right? COVID. We're still experiencing the impact of that. It really affected our kids. A huge burden, excuse me, a huge burden was put on our kids. You know, they were told to stay home for multiple years and sit in front of laptops, right? And there were consequences for that. There are, so basically, the way that I think of it is, the need for student services has increased significantly, right? Over the last five years. I think everybody would agree with that, right? That COVID has, has caused some serious issues for our, for our children. But over the same time period that we have seen student needs increase, student services have decreased. To me, that doesn't make any sense, right? The gap between what our kids need and what the city is giving them has grown, and I think that's a problem. And I'm really dissatisfied. A lot of times in this city, we're told that there's not enough money, or the money's not the right kind of money for us to use for schools or for our children. And so that's why I'm here right now. And I really find that hard to believe, especially when the city produces the kind of surpluses that it does every year. So one thing, so just sort of brainstorming, how can we free up money? There's so many different ways that we could find more money in this city. I think what we're looking for is a shift in city priorities, right? This is all, there are lots of choices here. We're looking for the city to, to shift. For example, the city has a goal of carbon neutrality by 2030. What if we shifted that goal? How much money would that free up? Right? We're often told that the budget that we're presented with is the only sensible way forward, right? We hear that often. But I challenge that. There's many different ways that we can create this budget. There's many different ways that we can free up money. And so I encourage you to do that and try to think outside the box a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mayor, that's all on our list here, I think. There's anyone else?
Great. Okay. Okay, we'll move on then to recommended actions. And I'm going to read the items and then ask if there are any removals, because there's no discussion on recommended actions.
Are we doing school committee announcements?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
I skipped announcements. Yes, go ahead. Announcements. Apologies.
Do you have an announcement?
I do, yes. The eighth grade class at JFK each year goes, has a trip to go to Washington DC, and we are currently holding a calendar raffle in order to raise money to be able to send all students who want to go. So that's currently going. I think the, the tickets are, I want to say $5 each, or $5 for 20. So you can...
Did you say a calendar raffle?
A calendar raffle, yeah. I'm not entirely sure what that means.
I remember.
Oh, this question was going to torment me, but I guess not.
But, but there's, there's a calendar.
And each day, you get something.
A prize. And you pick.
Each day.
Yeah.
There's not actual calen, I thought there were actual calendars. Okay, well, clearly I need some education on this, but I'm really excited about the raffle portion. That was really what I wanted to know.
And how does one purchase a raffle? Purchase a ticket?
Yes, yes. And that happens through the PTO, the JFK PTO.
Thank you. Member Agna?
I wanted to remind people, if you didn't know, that, that Representative Jim McGovern is going to have coffee at First Churches on Saturday morning at 9:30. It's open to all constituents. And I know that the environment we live in right now, it's really critical to have a chance to talk with Representative McGovern. And again, it's at 9:30 at the First Churches downtown Northampton.
Thank you. Member Stein?
This is sort of echoing some of the, I think, the sentiment that Member Agna had with the upcoming event with the congressman. But I, I, like most of you, have been struggling dealing with the onslaught of news over the last few weeks, professionally and personally. And I know many people are having difficult feelings with what's, what's been happening, rightfully so. And I just wanted to affirm, and I think, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I, I know my colleagues share these sentiments, that, you know, with the assaults on trans and LGBT youth and people of color and non-citizens, whose status may be complicated, we see you, we value you, and as long as I'm in the seat as a school committee member, we're going to fight to protect you in any ways that we can. And I know my colleagues share those values as well.
Thank you. I do have one other announcement. It's, it's not in this serious vein. It's in the, Vins Dog Show is on March 1st at Northampton High School, and starts at noon, I believe.
9:30 to 3.
Oh, never mind. 9:30 to 3. It's a big fundraiser for Vins, and we really count on Vins in helping us in our schools. And so if you have a dog, or if you'd just like to come watch, it would be great to see you. I'm going to be a judge. I think Dr. Bonner's a judge, and I forget who else is a judge. Anyway, it's a really, it's a fun thing, and it is a really important fundraiser, so I hope to see you there.
Great. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, so then, now we are up to recommended actions.
Could we take a quick break? We've been here for two, two hours. Is that?
Okay.
Is that okay?
We'll get to recommended actions. Okay, how about, let's do 10 minutes to be realistic.
10 minutes, great. Thank you so much. 10 minutes, great, thank you so much.
Okay, Mayor.
Okay, great. So we're back and back to recommended actions. So again, I'm going to read the items and then ask if there are any removals because there's no discussion on recommended actions.
We're starting.
Excuse me, we've begun.
Thank you.
Yes, you're very well.
We're just, if we could ask the audience, if they don't mind, we have reconvened the meeting. Do appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so these are the items for recommended actions. These are the minutes from January 9th, 2025. It's December 18th, 2024, retreat minutes. August 18th, 2022, meeting minutes. March 25th, 2021, meeting minutes. January 14th, 2021, meeting minutes. This is for the 8th grade, the Wright Flight Group Field Trip to the New England Air Museum in Windsor Locks, Connecticut. The Northampton High School Theater Group to Times Square trip with Dave Grouse. And a donation to MPS, from the MPS community to the Northampton High School Band, $1,372. And a revised donation for Jackson Street School from the PTO, a donation of $3,264. Any removals on the consent agenda?
Remove January 14th, 2021, meeting minutes.
January 14th, 2021, okay. Any other removals?
Yeah, could we, could we remove items F, G, H, and I?
Okay. So we're up to E, F, G, H, and I being removed. Member Weisenthal, did I see your name?
Even Member Stein may have just done what I was going to ask that we separate the approval of the meeting minutes from the approval of the rest.
Okay. Okay, so is there a motion on items A through D?
I make a motion to approve items A through D.
Second.
Motion made by Member Agnes, seconded, I think, by Member Seraphie Cox.
Yep.
Roll call, please, Cassie.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weisenthal?
Abstain.
One second. Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Abstain.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agnes?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Paid in favor to abstain.
Okay, so then moving on to the items that were removed, January 14th, 2021, meeting minutes?
Yeah, it's a very minor thing. The roll call lists me as absent, but I arrived at 6:49 PM and the meeting started at 6:45 PM. So obviously I was late, but I'm just kind of unsure how, how to, how the minutes should reflect that. It says that I arrived.
It doesn't say you arriving at a later time or doesn't say you arrived?
It does, but underneath that, it lists me as absent. So I guess, yeah. Cassie, Cassie is nodding her head like she understands. She got me. Excuse me, Madam Clerk gets me.
Any further discussion on the January 14th, 2021 minutes?
I, and I would, I would move approval of them with that minor change that Cassie can, you know, Scribner's error kind of level change.
Okay, motions made by Member Seraphie Cox, seconded by?
I'll second.
The Member LaBounty. Okay, roll call, please, when you're ready.
Okay. One second. Member Weisenthal?
Abstain.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Abstain.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agnes?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Paid yes to abstain.
Okay, great, moving on to F. So this is the, the field trip to the New England Air Museum. Is there, someone want to make a motion? Is there a discussion?
I heard from, uh, Member.
Not.
Yes, I, in, I, I listened to the subcommittee meeting from earlier this week or, or last week in which you said, I, I, can we just use first names? And just as a minor history lesson for folks, we used to say like Dr. So-and-so, Mr. So-and-so, Ms. So-and-so. And so going to member so-and-so was just a, in order to remove the sort of hierarchy and genderization of that. So if we want to go by first names, I am totally fine with that, too. It just would be a, a decision by the body.
I just wanted to.
Doesn't even have to be like a vote.
Not have to say my last name.
Yeah. So what I heard you saying is that it sounded like you were interested in taking the F through I as a group. So I would make a motion to approve items F through I.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Member Seraphie Cox, seconded by Member Weisenthal. Is there any discussion on that group? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Cassie.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Uh, yes, with gratitude for the donations.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agnes?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weisenthal?
Yes.
Stein, yes, want to abstain.
Okay, great, thank you. So it moves us, I've lost my agenda. To, sorry, hold on. My agenda just disappeared. Moves us onto new business, I believe, right?
Yes. It's the mid-year appropriations.
Okay, and there'd been a request for a discussion on mid-year appropriations.
Yeah, I think that this was requested by both myself and Member Stein. I don't know, Member Stein, if you have specific things to say, but I just know that, excuse me. You know, as we were talking, as we were wrapping up the, the budget process over the summer, we were talking about, you know, of course, we had, you know, additional funds come in at that time. And so we decided what to do with them then and, and, you know, having thoughts and chagrins, many, many sadnesses, of course, about the number of cuts that happened. And, you know, with the, since then, with the, the processes that have come about and, and the amount that, after closing the books, you know, we, at that point, the city hadn't closed the books yet on fiscal year '24. And so the final numbers weren't known. And now the, the final numbers are known. The, the budget surplus in the city has been, has been certified and so forth. And it, it seems like an apropos moment to have a discussion about requesting mid-year appropriation from the city in order to especially prioritize some of the restorations that maybe we would, you know, have liked to have done earlier in the year but couldn't. So my suggestion is for more than just a discussion. My suggestion is that we direct, I think that the process would be to direct the superintendent to request a, a mid-year appropriation from, from the city.
Okay, thank you. All right, we just did a mid-year appropriation last month. Member Stein?
Yes, and I know we just did a mid-year appropriation, right? It was two paras for $40,000 for the rest of the year in response to a health and safety grievance. So this conversation's a very different conversation. I think that, given the reality of the cuts and the further service degradation, safety issues, and failure to meet IEPs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that we've heard all about throughout the entire year and were warned when the cuts were made last year were going to happen. I think it's incumbent upon us as a body to do what we can. We can't control whether or not that money gets brought forward to be appropriated. But as a body, I think we need to respond to what our staff and what our students are telling us. And they're telling us they're in crisis. And some of that crisis can be alleviated by increasing staffing levels and other resources. I think we should make a motion to do so. I think we should ask for that type of appropriation. It's hard to know exactly what to ask for, especially in a vacuum with no preparation. When I was thinking about this, I was thinking of going back to the cut list. But situations change. I understand the staffing that we voted for in July essentially is no longer necessarily representational of the staffing across the district as situations change. So I think we're better off going for a lump sum, which if awarded, we can then pass a specific line item budget on. It's hard to estimate what that should be, right? It is February. There are still, what, four more months, five more months? Yeah, five more months. Or four more months, four more months. It's been a long day. We cut significant amount of positions. I think, to be realistic, just to bring up the level of services to even a position where we had last year, while we still had 13 cuts coming into that year, I think that's a place to start. I would also really like to see us discuss and take seriously the fact that we haven't done anything for reading and math remediation for JFK or NHS. I think those students have been particularly hard hit. When we heard the program of study recently, it was very clear from the principal that we have no Tier 2 services at the high school. How do we expect kids to actually make up any ground? And it feels like in a lot of ways, we've written a lot of these students off. We got curriculum money from the state because of the changes in, you know, the, the reading curriculum changes demanded by the state, which is sort of the problem we're in. And that was just for K through 5. But I'd like us to see a conversation about how we're going to actually address those needs as well. I would make a motion that we request the superintendent to bring a mid-year appropriation request to the city council or the mayor, I'm not sure exactly how it's supposed to flow, for $600,000.
For discussion purposes, I will second that. I, I see Member Agnes' hand up. I don't know why.
Thank you. I don't know if you can see, you can see, Mayor, the hands, right? I was just.
I can see yours because it's.
It's on Zoom, yes. So I would like to follow on what Member Seraphie Cox said about asking the superintendent. I have been in this district a long time on the other side and have been through several budget cuts. And at the time that we did experience those, we did turn to the superintendent as the alt team, I guess, in terms of our concerns about the budgets and the idea that we did have to cut a lot. And I just wonder, I'd like to turn to the educators, Dr. Bonner and your alt team, and see if they have expressed their needs at this point in the year, if that's something. see if they have expressed their needs at this point in the year, if that's something that you could talk to us about, that would be great.
So as you're putting me on the spot.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry. No, but but I kind of want to be bring a reality. So we have not been talking much about.
This year?
This current year.
Okay.
We've been talking about next year.
Right.
And so our focus has been on next year, and with that, there have been some new requests made, not necessarily the same positions that were cut, but some that may mirror the number of cuts to restore some of our resources to address the students' needs. So I know that there's a motion on the floor, but I would ask this body to also be thoughtful that we are so heavy focused on this year, and there literally is only about four and a half months left. If I were to bring a new staff for the high school, the semester has already started. They have already selected their classes. However, though, at the other schools, there are some things that could be done. The fear is, and this is a true fear for me, just don't really kind of want to mimic what happened last year, is that, so for us asking this request, will this request then be built in the base and I can maintain those positions and I'm not cutting them in June?
Right.
Yeah.
That's a good, really good.
So just some thoughts as you are making this decision, deliberating on this particular, just just think about those things and as we move forward. And so if there is a lump sum, I am going to go back to my team and talk about, okay, what are we going to do now? What are, and we do have higher priorities. We have the, we definitely want to restore some of our interventionists. There, there, we cut a special education teacher at Ryan Road, probably would like to restore that, you know. So there are things that we've talked about, looking forward to the next year's budget that we could probably begin in terms of restoring this year that we will carry into next year, if there's that guaranteed in promise.
Right.
That this is built in the base. So that's, that helps?
Yeah, that helps.
Okay.
Definitely, thank you.
Member LaBounty.
Thank you. I think sort of building a little bit off what Dr. Bonner was saying is, my one concern about saying a dollar amount without really understanding what the needs are is that I fear just a flat out no, right? Because of, because it seems high or it seems whatever. I would, I would like to hear what positions would have the most impact this year and push for that. That's kind of my thought about it. And maybe that comes at a dollar figure, maybe at some point that's what we say, based on what they tell us. You know, I, I have, I understand about building into the base, but there might be some things that, and I know it's hard to hire not knowing if you're going to have a job, right? But there are potentially, you know, what comes to my mind as I think about the admin person at Bridge, maybe there is somebody who would take time to do that for a period of months, you know, I don't know. But I feel like we, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathrobe, I don't want to say we absolutely couldn't get somebody or some positions filled because of that. And I'm not even certain that that's the only thing that can happen. I think when there's a crisis, sometimes you have to think about intermediate, short-term as well as the long-term, so I have both of those, you know. So I guess, but there might be certain positions where that makes sense and others where it doesn't.
Yes.
And that I would rely on the alt team and you to think about.
Just, just you tapped into something that I want to be clear on. So some of our contract language points out, particularly Unit A, is that if we hire after the start of the school year, it is an automatic pink slip at the end of the year. And so this is something that it makes it very tenuous for people to take positions knowing that that might happen. And more than likely, we could say, yes, we're going to hire you back, but there's no guarantee depending on where we are with that. And so that's why.
I see. So I guess.
Questionable.
I am in favor of that request. I think just, I don't know that I have a dollar figure that feels right to me without getting that feedback or getting those positions, so that's, that's my thoughts.
If I could ask a quick question, Mayor? So this number of 600,000, where did that come from? Considering that last, the last one we left fiscal year, talking about fiscal year 2025, it was a number of 452,000 or plus. So what happened between, I mean, how are you coming up with this estimate or this estimation of 600,000?
It wasn't my.
I can't remember who said.
No worries.
Sorry. But I'm used to talking to you, Emily, I'm sorry.
I'm happy to answer.
Okay.
It's in part that 450, it's in part knowing how much we cut, and it's in part knowing that what I want to add is things that we had not cut, and it's an imperfect number. The problem we have and why I'm suggesting it is time is of the essence. And if we wait around for a proposal of exactly what we want, we're going to lose weeks and months in the possible allocation process. So my suggestion is if we put a dollar figure on it, because we could easily spend $600,000 on essential personnel, that's not a problem. We can decide which ones those are, the alt team can present a recommendation, we can vote on those line item budgets. But it's hard for me to believe that, you know, adequately staffing a lunchroom isn't a priority, or making sure we have enough staff where people aren't getting injured isn't a priority, or monitoring recess. There's plenty of people we need, and we can spend $600,000 on it. I'm not worried about the dollar figure, it might be too little, frankly, but we have nearly half a year left. The quicker we move, the quicker we get a yes or no answer, and the quicker we could actually implement things. And I can't worry about who may or may not want to be hired or be let go, because we can't control everything, but we could try to control the experience and the resources that the kids we have right now are getting, and that's worth doing.
Member Hennessy.
And then in the room, both Member Davis and myself, we're not actually on the Zoom, so we can't raise our digital hands.
Okay. You guys had your hands up first, please go. I'm sitting.
Forgot to.
Go ahead, Member Hennessy.
I just, I do think we're in a crisis more in so many ways.
However, you define that, I think we heard from, from people tonight around the injuries and the class sizes, and most concerning, I don't know, most concerning, very concerning to me, probably most concerning is our special needs students and the IEPs. That was very troubling. So I have no problem with a number, I agree with Member Stein, you know, every district in the city could, I mean, in the state, you'd ask for more. So I'm happy to do this, and maybe even the phrase "up to," rather, so it won't get a big, flat no, and what they could give, if they can give, I fully support that. I think we need, we do need to make our voices heard, that we do need more funding for our schools, even if it's just for the four or four and a half months, it's going to help the kids and the teachers. So that's where I am right now. Member Davis.
Yes, I, one of my questions was where the 600 came from, where that number came from, and I guess, I would want to know, I would want to flesh that out if I were an administrator and hear, and hear more about what the actual needs are. But the other piece is, this is just to say it, and any educator that knows this, and any, well, anybody, I think, knows this, that schools don't just need warm bodies in the classroom, even if it's just a para, they're not just a para, they are skilled, even if it's just a person in the cafeteria, they have to know what's happening in the room. So we're not, I would not be at all interested, even though there are huge issues that I, we all know in our heart need to be addressed. I don't think it makes sense to just pretend that we're putting a Band-Aid on it by just like hiring people off the street who say, yeah, I'll work for four months, because every single person in a school from, from pre-K to 12 has a serious job to do, and it can't just be just any old buddy. So that's where, that's where taking the time and having the quality right people is important and might take deep into March, like realistically, I'm not, again, I'm not saying don't, but the whole idea of just get people doesn't sound like real to me. That's all I would say.
Just to remind you all in terms of the timeline, so once you make your decision tonight, and if I do end up making this request, I have, you know, I will need to know what items that the administrators want. So literally, next week, most of the administrators will be off, so I will not be able to have that conversation until the following week. And then we must post for 10 days, and then we start in terms of the interviews. And the interviews can occur during the posting, but just to know that we post for the 10 days. But all of this is, is in terms of the timeframe of getting something to the mayor, and then the mayor also getting it to city council. So there's, there, that is, that is at least a 30-day window. And so that, that puts us into, towards the end of March, so we're looking at April and May, so we're literally looking at two and a half months, well, with snow days. Let me stop. Sorry, I know. Let's hope that there's no more snow days. So I hear the hearts of the people, and I hear the voices, and I know that there's an urgency, but I wish that we can press this for next fiscal year budget, when there, it's the full year that we can start fresh and that that money is there and that we can restore some of the positions, as opposed to doing this right now. We're no longer mid-year, we're towards the end of the year, just to be realistic. So, you know, just to be realistic in terms of what's being requested. And you, next month, when we come together, I'm doing the preliminary budget for next year, and you will see the requests, there are different requests. And then there's also the restoration of some things, like we heard tonight in terms of the world language. And I just want to let everyone know that 188 students, that's not in one class. Those are.
Sure.
Sessions. Just so that, it's not, it's not a classroom lecture hall.
Right.
So I just, I understand where we are right now, but I'm just asking that you all at least consider in terms of where we are right now in the midst of the school year and that we push for those dollars for next fiscal year. That's all. Say.
Member Weizenfreund.
Oh.
I think Member.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Member Seraphie Cox.
That's okay. I, I hear the nuance in what you're talking about, Dr. Bonner, and for one thing, I think I have every faith that there will be an equally strong push for next fiscal year. So.
Well, I assume that, but I just.
Of course. I, so what I'm hearing from you is that, that the most strategic way, if we were to pass something tonight, the most strategic way to do it would be to have it be positions where it actually would be helpful to bring them on, potentially, you know, earlier, and that, as it were, then like a prioritization would be helpful, and that, that a part of the request would be that, that the funds be built into the base budget for FY '26 as well. And I hear what you were saying as well, Member LaBounty, but I, I think that if we're going to ask for what we need, we should ask for what we need. So, yeah. So I'm curious, Dr. Bonner, do you have even just a, I know that's, this is really putting you on the spot, but.
There's a lot around here.
I know.
Okay.
You know, back of the envelope, kind of thinking in terms of like number of positions or that sort of thing that, or, you know, specific positions, if you want to get that specific, in terms of what we could put into a request like this.
Yeah, I actually would draw from what the new request.
Yeah.
I would draw from that list.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just the timing, so I would always double check, because, you know, when we create this, something may have happened and changed, where it's like, no, let me rethink this, that I may need to do something different.
So do you think that, I think it was Member Stein's suggestion of saying up to, or maybe it was Member LaBounty, up to 600,000, is that a?
I think it was Member Davis.
I didn't see up to.
Member Hennessy.
Just Member Hennessy.
Well, we're all smart, so. Would that language be useful in terms of helping to give you some leeway in terms of what you might put into the request?
That's fine. I mean, whatever you all decide, I'm going to do.
Yeah.
So you just need to decide how you're, the strategy.
Yeah, okay. So, Member Stein, would you, we decided that friendly amendments are not really a thing, so we're not going to do that, but a revised, like revised motion, a motion maker can revise their motion.
Yes, I think you could either propose an amendment that we vote on, or I think then I would just withdraw and then restate.
Okay.
I'm wondering if there's going to be more, if we should wait? I'm happy to make that change, but I don't know if we should save the procedural back and forth until the rest of it piles up.
Gotcha. Also, just to say that my suggestions for changes would be to add that up to 600,000 and that, you know, requesting that the funds be built into the base budget for FY '26.
A question.
Oh, I think. It's a not.
No.
It's a not. So.
Oh, sorry.
And then, and Mayor, after Member Weizenfreund, then Member Miller also has her physical hand up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I agree that, you know, a mid-year appropriation isn't the most practical way to go in that it presents potentially some problems in terms of hiring. But I also don't think it's an either or. Yes, we've been thinking about next year, but we are also here, and we are listening to the people in our community who are telling us what's going on. And I think one of the questions I had early on was whether there, is there a list of restorations in order of priority, Dr. Bonner? You know, you know the schools better than any of us here, and I would imagine that you have a strong sense of, yes, this is what I would do first, second, third, fourth, if the money is available. So I'm wondering if that could be generated, how quickly could, could that list be generated? I'm assuming very quickly, because I'm assuming you have that.
Yes, I can generate and actually hand it to you tonight. However, I do want to speak to my alt team, just to make sure, because I don't, I want transparency, I don't want them to say, oh, you decided that for me. I need to have that conversation with.
Okay, but that's what I'm asking, so this list that you have, isn't the list that you've collaboratively created with your alt team?
It is a list.
Okay.
Through the preliminary budget process that I have, but I just want to tell you that sometimes things change, like I just got a change today on a request to add something. So I met with them in January, the beginning of January, so I just want to confirm, I need to confirm with them that this is truly what they desire.
So you could generate a list saying this is pending final conversations with the team?
Oh, yeah. I could do that, absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
This is my question.
This is member Miller.
Are you done? Yeah. She's in. My, my question is very simple. Is it either/or?
Oh, what, either/or meaning?
Well, I was listening to what Dr. Bonner was saying about the timeline and how long it takes, and I wondered if asking for a mid-year appropriation means that we can't also ask in the full? No. Right?
Right.
So in other words, we might be asking, and asking is a big question, a big word, asking about an appropriation now, but also, come when we're looking at next year's budget, we'll probably be asking again.
That's a potential, that's a possibility, because we don't know, we make projections of our enrollment, and we've been doing pretty well on that, but there could be, you know, it's like, for instance, Bridge Street experienced this. This was very interesting year, because they had 30 new students that were not in those projections that came in during the summer, and majority of them had some IEP needs. So, when things like that happen, you know, that's when you go back and say, okay, this, we have a higher enrollment than what we had intended for, and so that's when we make those requests. And for one, we have that special education stabilization fund to help offset some of those costs. But, I see what you're, what you're saying, but the, the push is for addressing the now.
So, to this point, I just, I want to make, I, I think I've heard some recognition of this, but I, I just need you all to understand. So first of all, we have $2 million that we took out of reserves that we have to build into the base, otherwise, it, it won't be recurring, and there'll be a deficit, right? So then, anything you're talking about now, if it can't be built into the base, it's just going to exacerbate that problem. So, unless there's like, complete understanding that you're talking about just doing a three-month, one-time fund, and then those positions get eliminated, you have to understand that unless it's built into the base, and it, it's not, it's going to turn into a deficit. I know I've been mocked for saying this, but this is precisely the situation, this is precisely why we're in this situation, right? We've had one-time funds, we had, we had federal funds, we also haven't even addressed the possibility of loss of federal grants, right? We have, we have quite a few things that we need to talk about this budget season, and I've heard an interest in having a more full conversation, having a more sort of analogous conversation as to the ones that I have on the city side with department heads. That is what the school committee should do. That is our job, to have those conversations, and to really talk about the priorities and the positions and what's needed, and how they fit into our budget. It's talk about, you know, how something has gone, it's to look at what, how things have been spent, what, if some things haven't been spent, to figure out if needs, what needs are, if there are, if there's short-term planning or long-term planning, how we reach those goals. That is our job, and I want us to have that conversation. It didn't really happen last year. But you have to remember that there are many different, there are lots of different things that we need to, to take into account this budget season, right? We have other, we have other budgeting concerns that we need to talk about. So, this all has to be part of this bigger picture, and instead of just thinking in one moment of time, you have to think a little bit broader in time, because if you create a situation that's then going to make a, a budgeting problem worse in the next year, it's just going to compound. That is how we got into the, the mess we were in in the first place. Member Agna.
This is so hard, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we can have this conversation as a community respectfully, and as someone said in public comment, that we can disagree without demonizing. I, I don't know that I felt that always, so I'm just, I'm hopeful that we can proceed, and I guess that's the big picture for me right now, because we are facing something really awful, I think. And I think what we're disagreeing on, I think the community, some in the community feel that they are observing the municipal finance plan, which has been laid out since Mayor Narkowitz in 2012, I think it's when it started, and some don't agree with that. And I think that that is something that is going to have to be reckoned with, and as some, a few people have said, there are elections coming, but there also are ways that schools can advocate for their needs, that I think, as a principal, it was often really effective to have a school council address the needs of a school. That was their representative of teachers, community, and parents or caregivers. So I'm hopeful in the future that that is a way that we can go about it, because I, I think the big picture is something that often is, there are, there are specific needs that people have for their children, and specific needs that a whole school has, or a district has, and I, I'm concerned, and I guess I'm saying it now, because I think we're faced with some very challenging times. And so, I, I know that if we ask for more money now, it's not recurring, if that is approved. It isn't something that we can count on being given to us, given to the schools, and I'm concerned about that. I really am, and I really do, as some people have criticized me for, for saying that I, I have respect for the finance plan, the municipal finance plan, that we've had in our district. And I, I say that as a person who oversaw a lot of cuts over the years. I don't know that it is, I, I, right now, it feels like the cuts are really big, and the needs are really high, and I think somebody spoke about how the pandemic has caused some of this. I think our environment currently with the politics, remember Stein, you made a good point about, we need to be there and see everybody in the, in our, our schools, because we're threatened by our government right now, which is a very odd situation to be in. And I'm, now I'm spinning around, and I'm sorry. I just usually can say what I mean, but I don't know that I know what I mean, or have, except in that I trust the teachers, I trust the families, I trust the administrators, I trust the mayor, I trust city council. I think we have to do this together, and if there's a way to do it together more effectively than on social media, which is often where these quote conversations have, I'm, I think we need to do that as a community, because the kinds of things that, I don't even look anymore, but the kinds of things that are being said, as someone did point out, that civil servants are being disrespected. I think we need to really pull back and try to do this in a very respectful way. I don't know what else to say at this point. I feel really overwhelmed. I'm sorry.
Member Gazy, you have not spoken yet.
So, member Stein, as your motion, when you redo it, is up to 600,000, and it would be built into the base, right?
Um, yeah, I have some thoughts on that, too, but that's the current proposal.
Okay. But, then we hear from the mayor that it can't be built in the base, it's a one-time thing, or?
It, it can be, like, that can be a part of what she can do. She was just saying that it's not automatically so, but that that would be what we would put in the request letter, that we would request that it also, that whatever is provided during a mid-year appropriation also be built into the FY26.
Okay, that's.
I mean, that's what's.
That's what I understand you saying, and what I was understanding the mayor's saying was different, is all that I'm pointing out.
There's no guarantee that it can be built into the base. We're already trying to make up $2 million.
Okay, great. I'm just trying to figure out how we're doing. Thank you.
Can I?
Sorry. I heard something, but I couldn't see who it was.
Member Davis.
I think member Stein is next.
Yeah, he was next. Go ahead, go ahead, Mike. Doctor, doctor, Doctor Stein, Mary Stein.
Doctor Mike.
Doctor Mike. Go ahead. Can wait. I'm just thinking.
You know, I, I really appreciate the conversation, because I think it's getting down to like, the heart of the matter, of what we're, what the territory of disagreement and possibility is. So I really appreciate member Agna recognizing that this sort of central conflict is around fidelity to a plan, or adjusting that plan. And this gets to member Gazy's question, right? And it's, if the mayor is going to stick with this plan, which she, in her last presentation, said she was going to, she's going to manufacture a deficit, a deficit on paper for the schools by not building it into the budget. But that's a choice, right? And the type of conversation that we are going to have as a body can't be limited to how are we going to meet our needs within the budget that's being offered, which right now is a 4% increase of the local appropriation that we got last year. So, 4% over the 40 million, 800,000 change, with some caveat differences, if the state gives us that extra $104, blah, 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 blah. So, if the conversation is just how are we going to divvy up that pot, that's not the conversation we want to have. Conversation really is, how are we going to meet the needs of the city? And there's two ways to do it. One is by amending or changing the fiscal stability plan the way it's assigning percentages. And the other way is, if you don't want to change the plan, is you make value decisions about what needs to be prioritized within the confines of that plan. And those are all possibilities and choices. The problem we have is there's only one person authorized to make any of those decisions. And we can say whatever we want, the community set it forever, and it doesn't matter. So, I think what I would suggest is, either we don't say we want it to be recurring, we could, or we can say we want it to be built into, quote-unquote, built into the base, or we say, we want the city council to opt in. Because right now, the situation is that you're getting 4%, and so we're constrained. If we want to have a conversation that we can do something else, the city council has to opt in, and the mayor then has to choose not to block it. But like, we have no power here, aside from pressure and signaling what the needs of the school are. And that's why I think we should ask for a mid-year appropriation. The other issue, you know, really is, like, the, the perfect cannot be the enemy of the good. In an ideal world, yes, we would hire in this way, and it would be beautiful, but we're in a crisis, okay? And I think member Weizenfreud got to some of these points when she was asking how the superintendent could be prepared, and, you know, frankly, like, I asked for this meeting a month ago, and we're here. There should have been a list. And I think there is a list. I think that list is what is being talked about for the budget that's already underway. So, this is not some inescapable gulf that we can't overcome, and we got to have a sense of urgency about it. The other thing I want to say is that, with very few exceptions, every one-time dollar starts off as recurring revenue. Very few exceptions, and that's by design, that's a fiscal stability plan. Underestimate recurring revenues in order to generate free cash based on DOR guidance that we then use for one-time expenses or put in all this various savings account. That's a political choice in the way we budget. It could be different. The gulf we're in right now, the problem we're in, is slightly compounded by ESAR, but really about one-time funds, and recurring revenue. There was a, there's recurring revenue, which is school choice, which built up over time and magically became one-time funds, because it wasn't spent down in the exact amount as the next year's appropriation was. Those magically made one-time money that then subsidized not building into the appropriation the last two contracts in the WINS model. That's the problem. And the mayor built 1.2 million back in, but we had like a $4 million gulf essentially we're looking at. So the political question is, do you want to build back in enough to support operations or not? And so far, the answer has been no. So, that's where we're at. There's very little we can do. I would encourage us as a body to advocate for the students and the staff and the families that are begging us to advocate. We can't control if we get the money, but we can control whether or not we ask for it. It's frankly the least we can do.
So that was a gross mischaracterization of what the fiscal stability plan is. The fiscal stability plan is purely plan, an override, and planned periodic overrides to meet growing operating expenses. As we all know, we live under Prop 2.5, and expenses and costs grow more than 2.5%. So the fiscal stability plan is planned overrides to increase revenue to meet these growing expenses that we all realistically know happen. And I will say that, as I just showed you all in the presentation that I gave a couple weeks ago, before the fiscal stability plan, the increases to the, to the public schools were all over the map. Some years, it was a 0%, maybe it was a 1%, a 2%, then it would jump up to a 5%, then it would go down sometimes to, to a negative. It was all over the map. Since the plan, there have been consistent increases. So the average before the plan was a 2.23% increase, and then after, it's a 4.61% increase. They, it is allowed stability in increases. Now, every, just, we, pick up the paper, every district has certain percentages they have to live under. No one gets to just magically create what the budget is. That's not how any of our budgeting works in this state. I know in other states, school districts are handled, have their own separate budgeting, but that's not how it is here in Massachusetts. So, every district is given an amount in which they have to build their budget. Before the fiscal stability plan, that, there was still an amount, it didn't, the fiscal stability plan didn't create this idea that there's a percent increase that you need to work within. All it did was stabilize it and allow for steady increases, which have increased the schools over these 12, 13 years. Before that, it was not consistent at all. Member Davis.
But why did you rescind the override?
You are not recognized.
But why did you rescind the override? You just made the case that it's a misrepresentation that we're under Prop 2.5, and you rescinded the override, and you still haven't answered why?
Member Stein, she recognized me, so.
I understand I'm violating the quorum, I, the body's rules. I understand.
So. You are not recognized, and I have answered that question many times, including when it happened. Yes, I did. You can go back and watch the meeting.
What was the answer?
Stop!
Okay.
Member Davis.
Uh, so.
Do you know the answer?
So, that's not, that's not cool. That's not what we're going to do. It's my turn, and then you raise your hand again. So, I had a couple of questions. Mayor, you said a little while back something about, that there's no guarantee, I think, I can't remember if you said can't be built into the base, or that it can be built into the base. And I wanted to clarify that if, if we were to, is that there's no way?
There's no guarantee either way.
There's no.
You're out of order. Excuse me.
I think that's, I think that's the mayor's job to do that. So, uh, so that there's no, there's no way to guarantee that, and is, and I guess, why is that? Just to clarify for me, like, let's just say we were to ask the superintendent, let's just say the 600, and that, and that we would say, and, and please build it into the base. And I think that you said, there's no guarantee that it can be? Is that because it depends upon what the, is the city council says, or what's available? Or?
So it's what's available. So, so the base is sort of the, the number you're starting at, right?
Yeah, right.
So it's, it's the. So it's the... you know, so last year, when we took money out of stabilization, that's one-time money.
Yeah.
But I said, I'm not going to do this unless we can build it into the base because then it's just going to cause cuts later, right?
Right, right.
You need to be able to have enough recurring revenue to build something into the base. Otherwise, it's built on nothing. It's not there.
Okay. And I...
So, yeah, Member Davis, can I just give you a little bit of a fuller answer? So if you saw... so in the presentation that I gave on January 30th, when we looked at the projection for FY '26, you saw all the places that we are pushing revenue. So there's been this repeated request, push revenue. Member Stein was just saying it. You're creating... you're creating a situation where you're creating all of this excess. Push revenue more. We have put... we have been pushing revenue. There are many reasons why there was additional surplus, which I've gone through countless times. Many communities, if not all communities, had them. We had federal funds, interest rates, all sorts of things, right? So there was a lot of extra surplus there that is not recurring, right? So if you look, we have to accommodate and to build in that 2 million into the base, we have pushed our revenue projections really quite far. You know, you try to be cautious. This is not cautious anymore, and it's potentially too far to the other extreme. So there's nowhere else to generate that revenue. So you can't sort of burn a candle at both ends, right?
Right. Okay. So the only other two little things that I wanted to say was, just thinking about a couple of things that Member Stein mentioned, as far as like, you said something about the perfect can't be the enemy of the good, and very often, I agree with that. But I... at least back to... I'm not sure which pieces of all of this you were referring to, but just in the... back to my original comment about who one might hire, like addressing this Springs issues with staffing. If my kid needed a para, I would want them to be like a really good one and not just an imperfect. You know what I mean? So like, that was my first image of what... I'm... that was where I was applying that comment, but it might be with regards to the budget. But the other issue is, I'm wondering what you meant by this phrase, that the mayor will manufacture this deficit. And I don't... in my understanding of what we're talking about, it's not... it's not that. So I want you to clarify what you meant by that.
Member Stein, you're recognized.
If you want. I was just wondering. I just wrote it down because I was like, I wonder what he means by the mayor will manufacture this deficit.
Yeah, I was waiting to be recognized. I know, I heard you. Thank you. What I mean is you can't have a city continually generating surpluses and then say you have a deficit. So like, the deficit is on paper by the way you decide to budget your revenues. And so like, it's not a real deficit. It's an unfunded request, right? So if we pass a budget that she won't fund, even though the city has surplus revenue, to call it a deficit is really weird because the city is not like running a deficit. The deficit within the budget, the way she's decided to lay it out, but that's a choice, right? The city is generating surplus revenue, right? That's why we just certified nearly $12 million in free cash, right? Part of that is surplus revenue from FY '24, and part of that is surplus revenue from FY '23, and part of that is leftover ARPA money that's been kicking around, which I don't know why it was an undesigned fund anyway. But the idea about this is that to call it a deficit only makes sense within the confines of how it's been constructed as a budget, not in terms of what the actual cities... it's not as if there's a $2 million hole, but then the city's going to have to fill with money they don't have. They can choose to fill it. They could choose to build it in, or they could choose to fund it with any of the reserve cash they have, except for the enterprise funds. But those are choices. Those are political choices. Your other question about perfect and enemy of the good, I would say, yes, you would want to know who your para is, but when we're hearing from staff saying there's students with one-to-one paras who are four-to-one, I think any qualified para might be helpful in that situation. It's like, that's the sort of enemy of, you know, the perfect being the enemy of the good. It's like, the situation's so bad that the way in which we might make decisions under better circumstances makes sense, but we're not in better circumstances. But I mean, I hope that answers the question. But I mean, I think that's a really hard thing to understand here is that even when the mayor says we're pushing revenues, still in that presentation, it said, we are not going to go up to the 5% to 7% new DOR guidance on producing excess revenue. We're going to stay at 3% to 5%. That means to my ear that at minimum, their pushed revenues are still going to return at least 3%. And they're exceptionally good at hitting those returns. Mostly, it's been 5% to 7% in that range the last four years. So 3% of $140 million is a lot of money. So the real conservative risk is that we're going to have like maybe $4 million in surplus revenue, okay? That's what we're talking about. That's the super conservative situation. So that is a component, right? I understand that the idea is that we only have the overrides. That's the only part of the fiscal stability plan. But the other real financial policy that's driving most of the decision-making is adherence to this guidance and producing one-time cash from recurring revenue. And the question is, how much do we want to do if we can't fund basic services? But that's not the debate we can have, right? And as I said, that's not the only choice. You could keep everything the same, allocate more money to the schools and less money to other services. Those are choices. Those are all choices, right? And there's only one person that gets to make them, and it's not us.
So again, I'm going to explain that so free cash is considered a non-recurring revenue source because the amount that will be generated is unknown. So yes, you try and generate some because you... without that, you would be... you would have significant challenges for multiple reasons. But you can't know exactly how much you're going to generate. And as I once said just before, more has been generated in the last few years because there was money in there like ARPA and higher interest rates and things like that. So across the state, there have been higher levels of free cash. ARPA's now moved out of there. And ARPA was in there because that is how... that is how that vehicle was set up. When you took ARPA as revenue loss, it got pushed into free cash. That's how it happened everywhere in communities. But so the definition, so as a non-recurring revenue source, free cash should be restricted to paying one-time expenditures, funding capital projects, or replenishing other reserves. That is what... there's a reason why DOR states that, and that's because it is an inconsistent revenue source, and you cannot depend on it for your operating budget. Member Eisenfreund.
So this is my first meeting here in person, and I'm happy to be here. I'm also finding it very difficult. You know, we spent the first hour and something listening to students and staff and parents, and that was very moving and very difficult. And I'm in the business of believing what I hear from students and parents and staff because there's no reason they would tell us something that isn't true or that they would give up their evenings instead of being with their families to be here and plead with us to do something. So I think that's real. And I guess, you know, excuse me, really, Mayor and other members, if I just don't get it. But here we are talking about money again and budgets again and fighting about budgets again. And I want to understand, maybe somebody can help me understand what our role is here. So we have a motion on the table. I think we should vote on it. I think we have to do something. I think it is a gesture. If nothing else, it's a gesture. If we can't hire all the staff or if we can't... if we can't manage to do it, it is a gesture. We need to let the community know that we hear them and that we care about them and that we acknowledge their pain and that we're trying to do something. And I think one of the things that's confusing to me is that, you know, Mayor, and I'm sorry you're not feeling well, I'm sorry you're not here in person, you know, I think it's a little confusing to me, you know, you're chair of the school committee, but are you speaking as chair of the school committee or as mayor or as both, or is there a difference? And I'm truly asking. I'm not trying to be snarky, okay? But I'm really... because what I hear you talking about is the city's budget and balancing priorities. But as a chair of the school committee, what would you say or would it be the same thing? And I'm truly asking. I'm not trying to be obnoxious.
I appreciate that. I wouldn't think that you're trying to be obnoxious, and it's a good question. I mean, the challenge of my position, and, you know, I've said this before, one of the reasons I wanted to be mayor is that I cared so deeply about public school funding. And we have given large increases each year. We are... and as I also often say, two things can be true, that we can have given truly historic increases to the schools over the last three years, and we also are in a situation where we have had to make devastating cuts because all of this other funding has fallen away. But again, like, look, you know, look at Beltratown, look at Amherst, look at all of these other communities. They're all in similar situations. This is a very challenging situation. I said this in my... one of my very... you know, in my first year, when we were talking about doing an additional appropriation above what the percentage was that the city could build into the budget. And I said, I never want to do something that's going to jeopardize someone's job. The reason I wanted to do this was to continue the stability for the schools. Now, we're coming... you know, I took office at the sort of tailish end of a, not even, you know, during Omicron, during the pandemic. So there are all of these other forces at work. But I truly believe in trying to create a stable foundation for the schools where we can have reasonable increases each year, which is what we've been able to have for over a decade. That was my priority. So I would say I'm speaking in both roles because creating a situation where we are going to have to lay people off and we go through this gut-wrenching experience and seeing the impacts on the staff and the students, no, I don't want to go through that. I don't want us to go through that. I don't want any of us to go through that. And so we can't keep recreating the situation where we are building a budget on something that's not solid and recurring. And that is how it had been done for decades. Member Agna talked about it before. This absolute roller coaster where you had no idea what percent increase you were going to be looking at for the next year, right? So like, suddenly, you could... the schools would have to deal with a 0.5% increase. And then the next year, maybe depending on what happens with other things, you could go up to 3%. And every year, it would just ricochet all over the place. That's not a way to build stability in schools. So I don't know if that answered your question, but...
Well, I mean, I hear you, and I don't doubt that's why you wanted to be mayor, and I understand what you're saying. And yet, what is our plan, right? Because we have to do something.
Well, I agree. And I think that the school community should be working on a plan.
And, you know, and I've done this in my own work, right? But there are ways to take even... even if we... let's say we agree that, you know, and again, I think there's not basic agreement on some basic facts, but let's say we agree that this is one-time funding. There are ways to use one-time funding aggressively to bridge us until we understand how to make it work, right? It's risky. It's a little bit risky. And I understand that it's your job to keep the city safe and that that's an awesome responsibility. I do. But, you know, we have to be able to communicate a plan to our citizens.
I understand what you're saying. So two years ago, I made that choice, and we took 1.2 million dollars out of the fiscal stability plan, out of that reserve fund. And that was the conversation, that that would be one-time funds to make that bridge. And there was a hope that other things would happen, like fair share amendment, that would solve the problems. And I said at the time, that's magical thinking. I don't... we cannot rely on that. So if that doesn't come to pass, we have to figure out how to make up that one-time revenue. And immediately, not even a year later, it was, I can't believe we're even talking about cuts again, when there wasn't a magical way to make that up. So I have... I... we have tried that. And if there's complete recognition that this is a bridge, that's one thing. But that doesn't seem to be the case. And it's understandable because there are needs. But there has to be a recognition that it is a one-time bridge, and it needs... everyone needs to acknowledge it. Member LaBounty.
I think I would like to call the question to the floor so that we can vote. My one concern is that if we put the part in about building it into the base, that it was less likely to pass anywhere. And though I do know that is a... you need to ask for what we want. I do believe that. My concern is that's going to be just a no. So whoever's making that... I think it was your motion.
It's not currently on the floor, so, yeah. It's just his original motion right now.
Okay. That we bring up, but that we take a vote, and if you could restate what you think the motion is at this point.
I think Margaret hasn't... did you want to speak, Margaret?
Well, are you calling...
I'm calling the question, yes.
Then we need...
She called the question.
Oh, sorry. Then we need to vote on calling the question.
Oh, we vote on that?
Yeah.
I couldn't hear what she said.
I think she's just... she's getting there on her computer.
Okay.
I'm ready to...
To call the question? That's what we're voting on? Not the question itself?
This is voting on calling the question.
Okay.
Which is a non-debatable motion.
Right.
Member Seraphie Cox, I thought you withdrew the motion. Did you not?
So the motion was made by... the original motion was made by Member Stein, and I seconded it. And that is what is still on the floor, except that Member LaBounty just made a motion to call the question, which I seconded. And so that's a non-debatable motion, and that's the motion before us.
Can they read... can you read the motion?
That means that...
But first, we're just calling the question.
The motion that we need to vote on right now is calling the question.
Okay. Do you want to restate the motion, Member Stein?
No, it's not the motion.
No. The motion on the floor right now is whether or not we are going to vote. Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Hennessy. Member Miller.
I think she said yes. Did you say yes? Okay.
Member LaBounty.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shara.
Yes.
Member Gezi.
Yes.
Member... Member Eisenfreund.
Yes.
Anamis. All right. The motion.
So now we move to a vote on the original motion.
Okay. Can we please restate the motion?
The motion was to request the superintendent... actually, to instruct the superintendent to request from the city council and the mayor a mid-year appropriation of $600,000.
Did not add it to the base.
No, we're in the original motion, so I... we haven't done any of that.
Okay. Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Oh, you seconded it, right?
I did.
Okay. Sorry, guys.
You're all good.
All right. Members Hennessy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member LaBounty.
Yes.
Member Agna? Member Davis?
No.
Mayor Shara?
No.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weisandfrohne?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
So eight ayes and two nays.
Okay, moving on to item B. This was a requested discussion of subcommittees and how to transfer information in between the subcommittee and the larger committee, but also follow through on committee assignments. I'm not sure what that means. I believe it also was a request to talk about how to transfer information between terms, from one term to the next, the next as well. Member Hennessy, I think this was your, your, your hand is raised. Why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I don't know, actually, if it should be for the whole body, the more I think about it, if it should go to rules and policy. But for me, the major concern was the transmission of information from one school committee to the next elected body. And that there has to be, there hasn't been anything that, you know, I've received on a new committee from the previous subcommittee or other. And so I'd like some system. I don't know whether it's we, the Chair of each committee has a binder. I actually don't know the answer. But I do know it would have benefited me, and I think Member Agna and Member Miller, on one of our committees together, if we had had, and I could go through the notes, right? But I think it needs to be an easier system. So that's where it came from. I don't know if it should be the whole body talking about it, or if it should go to the rules and policy.
Okay, anyone else want to?
Yeah, I have my end up.
You have the end up? Okay. Member, oh, lots of people, okay. Let's see, Member Seraphie Cox, then Member Agna, then LaBounty and Stein.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know why there's an echo.
I didn't touch it.
You are...
Where, where?
Bottom, bottom, right, 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 right.
I don't know how that happened. Sorry.
No worries. That's why I actually don't even connect my audio when I'm... Okay. I really liked the suggestion that was made at the Budget and Policy, Budget and Property Subcommittee, whenever that was, earlier this week, about having, as it were, like a running list of things that have been referred to the Subcommittee that are pending, just even as like a reminder to-do list for the Subcommittee. So that was one idea that I really liked. And then I'll just make a motion to refer this to Rules and Policy Subcommittee.
I'll second that.
Well, and then she's the Chair.
Okay, great, thank you. Member LaBounty?
Yeah, I think, similarly, I wanted to process for the, when we have these larger meetings, that there be something that goes to, whether it's the Chair or to all the various subcommittees that say, here's the things that were referred to you, but, you know, expecting something back from the Subcommittee that says when we're going to talk about it, or when we're going to bring it back to this committee as the whole committee, or something that just keeps the loop going. And whether it's, you know, the clerk keeps that list and sends it, whatever it is, was just some process that helps us do it. So that, because I think unintentionally, we don't get back to things. And then we go, oh, yeah, it's been four months. And so a way to keep us on track. And I don't know if that's something that should also go to Rules and Policy, is that, or is this as a whole, this question as a whole, both between bodies, you know, from one, from one school committee to another, and then also from the school committee to the subcommittees? Maybe it's a different process, but the same question, how to pass information?
Okay. Member Stein, and I see you, Member Miller, okay.
Yeah, it's just, I appreciate this idea. I think it's something we really need. I like that we talked about including this on some sort of running list. It may be worthwhile to include it on the, every agenda for a Budget and Property Subcommittee meeting, what's referred there. And overall, it would be good to keep track of what the overall body has referred. So at the school committee level, one way to do it would be to keep a document of everything that's been referred and what the plan is, right? Because what happens is not even just across school committee sessions where elections change members, but even within that time, things get referred and disappear because there's so much to do. So I think if we keep better track of that and manage it, it gives a direction for priority setting, for agenda setting, et cetera. And right now, we just don't have a way to track it. I think it's a good idea for Rules and Policy to think about how we might structure that and bring back a proposal to the body.
I think Member Miller is next.
I didn't just say. Member Miller?
So one of the things also that I think needs to be considered is following up on what Member Stein just said, which is not only recording somehow the input that the Subcommittee gets from the larger body. So members from the larger body often email and send input to the Subcommittee. For example, we're on the, both the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee as well as the Curriculum Subcommittee. And we get lots of emails from people, input. And somehow, I think, when we present to the larger group, I think there's a question about, is the vote happening in the larger group about something, or does the Subcommittee have the authority to conduct the business? So that's often a question. And I think that needs to be clarified.
Okay. Q. Member Gacy?
Well, in Rules and Policy, we get a lot of stuff referred to us, a lot of policies. And so we've created a spreadsheet that has, you know, the policy, when it was referred, the dates that we've worked on it, when it was voted on, the first reading, the second reading, the third reading, and when it's posted. Because things got really crazy with our former secretary. And so we had to do a lot of digging. It occurs to me that the Chair, Subcommittee Chair reports are a good time to update everybody on the progress that you've made on your things. And I would love for people who have other ideas to please other members who have ideas on this question, to send them to me. I think you can do that. Just send me your input, and then I will collate them and present them when we talk about this in Rules and Policy.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Any, any further discussion? Member Miller? Yes, no?
Yeah.
Yes.
So another one, though, another thing to consider is that it's a little different on the Superintendent Evaluation Committee. Because the Superintendent Evaluation is a public, it's a public meeting, which makes it quite difficult sometimes. Because we're talking about a very personal and personnel issue. And I think that it's not necessarily appropriate for some information to go back to the larger group or back and forth. I just think that needs to be taken into consideration when doing this. That's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Okay. Was there a motion?
Yeah, the motion was to refer this to Rules and Policy.
Okay.
I'll second.
I think you've been seconded already, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, she did already? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Roll call, please, Cassidy, whenever you're ready.
Yes. Member Miller?
To refer this to Rules and Policy. Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weisandfrohne?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
And Member Hennessy?
Yes.
And of course, folks can, like, make changes to their agendas without, you know, the policy being in place, like, you know, Subcommittee's...
Okay. C, this is in first reading, Policy IKF, which is the graduation requirement policy. And Member Gacy?
So we were looking at, at our last Rules and Policy meeting. We met with Karen Hildago, Diane Zamer, Ben Tagliari, and Megan Harrison, talking about the new competency and also this particular policy. We did need to change it because there's been a reordering of the sequence of social studies. There is going to be further work on the competencies that Northampton will set, that the school committee will set for graduation requirements. And that's still in process. But this piece is ready for first reading.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Member Stein?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we had a really great conversation about this and the challenge of what to do now that MCAS is no longer a requirement. I know some of you may have observed in your own districts that you might work in, or in the news, various approaches to this. And I don't know that anyone knows the best approach, but I think this is probably the best first draft we could take on it. So I'm interested to hear what others are seeing out in other districts, how they're handling this, or what ideas folks might have. Because this is uncharted territory for us. It's not the typical, MASC has a new policy and you adopt a version of it with some tweaks. We really have to make some tough decisions, I think, about what, what we want to be our graduation requirements. And we've gotten some really great advice and feedback from administrators in the high schools. So just interested to hear what folks think.
And we'll continue to get advice and feedback because that's, they're on the front lines.
Member Agna?
Dr. Bonner, do you have a comment on this situation?
No, I, as we said, this is a great first read, it's a good start. The Commissioner is planning a work group to talk about this very thing. Districts have put together some different policies that I can actually share. We just did a, well, they just did a survey, and I have some sample policies. That was, literally just came in this week. And I think you may have heard in the news, I, hopefully I don't name the wrong district, but I think it was Frontier that was actually looking at actually keeping MCAS as their graduation requirement. And it was tabled for a later time. So districts are coming at this at different angles. And we have, right now, we have very little guidance from DUCY.
I think it's safe to say that Northampton will be probably bringing back MCAS.
Won't. I don't think so. No.
Well, and there's also a new Commissioner coming on.
Yes.
That might be also why there isn't a lot of movement from DUCY.
A lot of movement, you're right.
We don't have to vote on this, so we can just move on.
No, that's right, this is first read.
Okay. Great. Next is, this is a vote to authorize the Superintendent to submit a statement of interest for grant funding for the JFK replacement roof. So this is to go after MSBA funding. And Dr. Bonner, would you like to present this?
Okay, so kind of a discussion before you all take that vote. And the actual recommended action has to be read out thoroughly for the, for the records. So Massachusetts School Building Authority has an accelerated grant program that they're going to be offering every two years. And some of the categories is roof replacement as well as heat pump conversion. And so let's start with the roof replacement, which is the very first action that I put before you. And then E will talk a little bit about the heat pump conversion. So this is specifically for JFK roof replacement. And the roof system at the JFK Middle School was substantially completed in March of 1997 with a 15-year warranty from, I think the company was Sarnell, Sarnell. The roofing material is nearing end of life with an increased occurrence of leaks due to cracking and seams separating. The roofing system has been maintained by various roof contractors post-warranty and has been fairly stable. The past few years, we've seen an increase in repair requests for leaks. So currently, they have, we have spent approximately $22,000 in various repairs over the past two years. And the high costs are associated with repairs, but also the increase in labor materials and cost for those repairs. And so this is a grant funded request. And so also, let me just kind of rewind, sorry, I'm a little tired. If you recall, that this is one of the requests in the capital improvement plan. And this project was, was set to be addressed by 2030. There was $3 million that was requested for this particular project. So if you know anything about MSBA, and I haven't dealt with them for many, many years, and I know that there's new practices, it takes a long time to get through that system. So, and then this grant is only offered every two years. So we're, it's just a statement of interest, it's not a guarantee that we'll get it. But it, but it has to go through this body, and then it has to go through the City Council for approval for me to even just submit the paperwork. So that's what I wanted to share with you on that. Do you mind if I talk about the heat pump conversion? So maybe you guys can just go straight into the two, is that okay, Mayor?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay. So likewise, you all know that we're looking at our boiler systems, and we are also moving towards that net zero carbonization. And so the boilers at JFK, and it's JFK again, are non-condensing, condensing boilers with a maximum efficiency of 83%. They were installed in 1996, and thus likely to need, need to be replaced by 2030. There are a few locations in the school with cooling, but most classrooms do not have cooling or dehumidification. A conversion to heat pumps would allow for a high-efficiency decarbonized heating system with the added benefit of providing cooling to the entire building. Depending on system design, a heat pump system might enable simultaneous heating and cooling in different zones with full heat recovery. This, you know, again, is an opportunity to apply for this grant. The grant is not 100%. There's, there's a formula in which... There's a formula in which MSBA uses, and I think their base is 31% in terms of reimbursement for the cost of the repairs, or in the case of the roof replacement. So I bring this before you, really just to start the process and the paperwork. I don't really know what will happen at the end of that. But these are projects that is in the capital improvement plan as well as the need that we need to replace these items. So hopefully that was clear. Oh, Tony, who's been waiting to see if there was any questions on this particular project, and then he could tell me if I actually covered it. He'll give me a pat on the back, hopefully. Tony?
Hey, Tony.
I'm trying to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
I think that was an accurate description of both projects, yes.
Thank you.
They were your notes.
We need it till quarter to 10 to say that.
Member Stein?
I'm glad we're looking at opportunities to leverage grant funding, especially for some of these capital expenditures. My hesitation on us voting for this is that the school committee has had no visibility into the capital improvement plan insofar as it relates to our facilities, and do not know what other priorities and the politics of approaching the mass building association are. And I really think that we need to understand those things before we endorse this. As property falls under the Budget and Property Subcommittee, which I would argue this building is, I think we should refer this to the Budget and Property Subcommittee so that we can have a better idea of why are we funding, going for this roof and not another roof, this heat pump and not another heat pump, how much is really going to come back, what the projected cost was, et cetera. There's a broader question of actually understanding all these elements of the strategic plan, which we haven't discussed. We've heard mostly through council that there are consolidation plans and other things and other ideas, but we've had no discussion or input. So I would make a motion to refer both D and E to the Budget and Property Subcommittee for further analysis and discussion, and we can bring our recommendation back to the whole body. My understanding from the city council meeting where this was partially discussed was that the current issues are not urgent, and I don't know when the deadline is for this, but I think we have time to do some due diligence. I make that motion.
On readiness, Mayor, I do have my hand up, if I may.
Yes. Yeah, sure, please.
Thank you for recognizing me. So this is just a statement of interest, and I also do want to let you all know that while you are deliberating further on this, we will miss the window, and the next window is two years. So just consider that.
What's the date? What's the date?
March 21st.
So we're going to meet both the Budget and Property Subcommittee and the school committee, and the city council will meet before then. We could meet the date and do the due diligence.
So out of fairness to the people who have to put this grant paper together, it is a 35-page document, and we would like to know if it's going to be moving. We don't, there's too much right now that we're doing, and I would hate for us to waste time when it was not approved.
Tony, do you want to speak to prioritization at all?
I mean, the physical priority would be the roof. That's something that is leaking. No major leaks, but as Dr. Bonner stated, our repair costs are $22,000 over the last couple of years. That will probably stay similar. So that would be my first request. Just to give an idea on past roof projects, so the MSBA's reimbursement rate on past projects was 55% to 56% total back to the city. But it does take a long time, just from, I don't remember how long it took, honestly, from statement of interest to them reviewing and then going through their own approval process, it's a couple of years, potentially.
Thank you. Member Davis?
Thanks, thanks. I guess, oh, sorry. I don't know, but I pushed that other button. Am I a better now? No.
Muted.
It's, oh, I unmuted. Ding dong. My old Zoom, sorry. I, this may be oversimplified, but we could always just say no to the grant if we got it.
That's right.
Right? That's one option if we were granted. But it seems to me that, for me, I think it would be worthwhile to go, I think the due diligence is very important. I agree with that completely, but it also, at the very same time, sounds like a really long process. Maybe we could do both at the same time. And also, just as far as the capital improvement committee or commission, or I forget what the last word is, there's a member of the school committee each time on that as a representative to speak for the needs of the school and to hear about it. So I know in my first term, I was on it, but not this term. I think it was Karen.
Karen.
Karen, so I realize she's not here to speak on that, but there officially is a member hearing about the needs of the schools. That's all I would just want to say.
Member Gacy?
Is the statement of interest binding? And could we amend that if we, if our due diligence, you know, proved otherwise?
Yes. It's just a statement of interest to start the process, and usually, it's about a five-year process.
So it makes sense to me to just file the statement of interest and then refer it to the budget committee. Well, there's another motion on the table, my ally.
But it hasn't been seconded.
Oh, then I would make a motion to submit the statement of interest for the two projects and refer the matter to Budget and Property to see if this is what we need most with our money.
Seconded.
Seconded? I think. Member Gacy?
Yeah.
No.
Member Agna?
I was going to say, Member Gwen.
Member Gwen.
Am I allowed to ask?
Okay, Member Miller?
It's, I thought we were just voting on whether to authorize the superintendent to submit an interest in applying, not that we're talking about money yet. We're talking about applying for a grant. Why would we say no to that?
Well, then you can vote yes on the motion.
Let's vote on the motion. I called the motion.
Point of order, neither one of you are recognized, and I have my hand up to be recognized to speak on this matter.
Excuse me.
Member Miller was recognized.
I was the one that spoke out.
Yeah, he was talking about me and Member Agna.
Yes.
We spoke out of turn.
Silly.
I thought I said another hand, but Member Stein?
Yeah, I know that it seems like there's no downside, but as someone who works in grants for a living, when you submit an interest in one project, sometimes precludes you from submitting interest in other projects. And since we don't have a sense of what the capital improvement plan has in store for us, because Member Foster never presented it to us or gave a report to this body or the Subcommittee, there may be things about this particular program that actually would be consequential. It may not be just simply, oh, we want to give interest. We might commit ourselves to a particular project that precludes us from going after other projects. These are the things we would know if we understood more about this particular grant funding mechanism. So I just say that I don't know this for sure because we haven't seen it. But in many cases, you're not allowed or limited in what you can ask for and how long you can ask for it. And certain programs affect other programs. So we should know these things before we send a 35-page document expressing interest. That's my advice. You know, we'll vote, and we'll see what happens.
Dr. Bonner?
Yeah, just for clarity, when the Commission on Capital Improvement Planning met, and this was presented to the city council, it was a large booklet. Mayor, you can help me with the memory of this?
I was not in that meeting, so I would.
Okay, so that was just the meeting, but then there was the full booklet that.
Oh, you mean the capital improvement program?
Yes, capital improvement.
Oh, yeah.
And so I just want to refresh everyone's memory that I actually sent that book out to you electronically, and within that, there were three areas I said to look in that showed what the priorities are for the schools. And so that one area was technology, the other area was MPS in terms of the buildings that Tony Cusnier submitted. And then there was also something that Bobby submitted in terms of radios. So there was like three different areas to review. And so just go back and look at that plan so that you are familiar with the projects that have been submitted. Thank you.
And so I'll just note, again, this was slated for 2023, so it's a five-year recurring, renewing plan every year. So this was not deliberated at council this year because it's not a current-year project. But it is, did make it on the plan, so this is just the very beginning, this conversation even is sort of the very beginning stages of planning around this and including expressing this, you know, this letter of interest for the possibility of using MSBA funding. Tony, is there something that you wanted to address?
One point, the heat pump conversion project through the MSBA, just informationally, is brand-new this year. It's brand-new to everybody. The state just created it, and quite honestly, I don't even know if they know how it's going to operate. That's just, those are just facts. My facility director-manager group throughout the state, we've been discussing it too, and not a lot of people understand exactly how they're going to do it. JFK was a test building for the MSBA to kind of kick-start this program, but they won't have any of that information available to us until June or July, they said. So just to give an idea of one of the programs, just informationally, you know, it's brand-new in the state. There hasn't been any school that's done any of it through the MSBA. We were at the top of the list as being the test school, but they still don't even have data on that. So that may take a couple of years at least.
Okay, thank you. Member Weisenthal?
Yeah, so I'd just like to understand something a little bit better. So Member Stein said that the capital improvement plan wasn't presented to the school committee. So is that something that should have happened? But then I also heard Dr. Bonner said it was presented to the city council or the school committee. So I just, I guess I just want to get some clarity on the facts from anybody. That would be awesome.
So the capital improvement plan gets presented to the council, and they vote by resolution on the, accepting the plan in total, but then any of the expenditures are all individual, they go through orders, so they have to then approve the funding for it. So it's a council process, but there is, so it's a long process that starts in the summer, where all departments, including the schools, are asked for what their capital projects are, and they work with the finance director to come up with a plan. We look at what available funding there is. There is an advisory committee that includes a school committee member and a city counselor, and also some residents who meet with the departments and then make recommendations on the plan to me.
So can I ask a follow-up question? So can you then vouch for the fact that these two items that are presented to us are in fact priorities of the capital improvement plan?
They are, so yes, they are. So again, it's a five-year annually-renewing plan. So the roof is definitely is a priority. It's something that we are doing sort of planning, a roof obviously is a big expense. We are doing, you know, multi-year planning to get to the place where we can do this roof replacement, which is why we're starting this process here in the hopes of getting MSBA funding for it. So it is, it was on the plan this year for 2030, as Dr. Bonner explained, because we anticipate that it will take up to five years to be able to get to the place where we could do that project.
Thank you.
Member Seraphie Cox has her hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. So I, I'm fine with voting in favor of Member Gacy's motion, I'll just say that. I definitely do want us to do due diligence and dig into this more. I would love to know if this ties us to any kind of specific school consolidation plan, especially as Bridge Street, a former Bridge Street parent and, you know, Bridge Street has some history with school consolidation. And I'll just say now that I know that my community would fight hard to not close Bridge Street School. However, from a broader process perspective, I'm not happy with the, you know, current process around capital improvements. I think that we need a more robust process, and part of the reason why I say that is because I've been in a far more robust process. When I lived in Minneapolis, Minnesota, I served on the equivalent of this, the advisory committee. It was called the Capital Long Range Investment Committee. And we had, you know, each department would come to us, make presentations about what their priorities were, why they prioritized various things, and then we would go through a matrix where we would actually take the city's strategic plan and strategic goals and align them with the projects that were in front of us and rate them on all of these various pieces of the matrix. Those ratings then would filter, it was basically like, you know, voting, as it were, and then we would put together a comprehensive package that was a public document and would publicly present it to the council, and it would be a recommendation to the mayor, who would then incorporate it into their, you know, into their plan. Sounds like there are some elements of that that exist in our current process, but I think, especially with the kind of questions that have been coming up around capital improvements and, you know, how money flows, it would, I think, behoove us to be really intentional and transparent about our processes. So that's my kind of two cents. And then my question is, since Member Foster Cannon was our representative to the capital advisory committee, that's probably not the exact name, but do we have, have we, Mayor, have you appointed a replacement?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so Member Weisenthal would be that replacement.
Oh, okay. Very good.
With the one caveat that how she came into office, if someone, if someone else were to be elected, they would immediately take office. So she would go through most of that process. So the process.
That's true. It starts.
When does it start?
Oh.
Pretty much. It would. It would be largely done by the time the election would be.
Are you saying that as soon as the election happens, it's not as though Member Weisenfreud serves out the rest of the term? The new person immediately takes office? If it's not her herself?
Yes.
Okay, I did not know that.
It is a funny thing in our charter, yes.
I didn't know that either.
Member Weisenfreud?
Yeah, so one, yeah, I was actually reading the charter yesterday, and I don't remember reading it that way. I remember reading that I would serve through January 1st if I wasn't elected, or that the new person would take office January 1st, but that's easy enough to verify. My question is, do I have to accept that mission? Or is that something that we can discuss in our subcommittee about who would be best suited or who would want to, I mean, if you appoint me, do I have to do it?
If you refuse to do it, I will appoint somebody else.
I'd just like to think about it for a hot second, I think.
Okay, I had said that whoever won your seat would be taking over those empty, those vacated positions. Any other discussion on this?
Could we hear the motion again?
Submit the statement of interest for the two projects and refer the matter to the Budget and Property Committee to see if this is what is needed. And I need a second.
It was second by Gwen.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Bonner?
Yeah, for the minutes, because we will have to send these minutes to MSBA, is that the motion really should read what the action is.
Oh, right. It's in the agenda.
Yeah, let me get there.
And then you can make a separate motion to refer this to Budget and Property.
I have it up if you need.
So I make a motion to authorize the superintendent to submit a statement of interest for grant funding of JFK replacement roof and...
No, you have to read the resolved portion, right? The big paragraph?
Yeah, just read the whole thing.
Read that whole paragraph?
That's what the statement has to go.
Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 13th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of the Northampton Public Schools, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 2025 for the JFK Middle School located at 100 Bridge Road, Florence, Mass. 01062, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority as a Priority 5, replacement renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility to replace the JFK school roof, the roofing material of which is nearing the end of life with an increased occurrence of leaks due to cracking and seams separating, and hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Northampton Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Additionally...
That's so good.
Okay, whoops, what did I just do? I just lost...
You need the next one?
Mm-hmm. Additionally resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 13th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of the Northampton Public Schools, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 2025 for the JFK... Oh, that's for the, not the JFK, for the...
For JFK.
Oh, heat pump, okay, okay. For the JFK, I've lost my place, Middle School located at 100 Bridge Road, Florence, Mass. 01062, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority as Priority 5, replacement renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems.
Something going on with the sound guy?
I know.
Somebody's not...
To increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility.
Margaret's unmuted. Margaret's unmuted, she's muted. There we go.
Okay.
Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility for heat pump conversion at the school to eliminate the use of portable air conditioning units, which are inefficient and ineffective, and hereby further specifically acknowledge that by this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Boarding Authority or commits the Northampton Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
I second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Member Gezi, seconded by Member Agna. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Cassie.
Member Miller.
Member LaBoutte.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shera.
Yes.
Member Gezi.
Yes.
Member Weisenfreud.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
No.
Member Hennessy.
Yes.
Nine yes, one no.
Okay, great, thank you. Next is a budget transfer request. This is a $20,000 transfer between instructional hardware and looks like software, tech software. And this is to pay for an Aspen annual renewal invoice. Dr. Bonner?
Oh, actually, I'm going to defer that to Bobby. Bobby's on the line.
Hi, Bobby.
Hi. So this is just, we had a couple, it's not just really for Aspen. It's actually for some additional things that we had. There was a SNAP software, which is a nursing software, that was originally written into the grant. And the grant no longer, you can only do the software like every three years or whatever in that grant, so we had to adopt that into the budget. And then Google Workspace. So it created a little bit more of a cost in that one particular category. So we're just transferring from the hardware cost into the software cost for that.
Okay, thank you. Member Stein?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I've heard over the years a number of complaints from administrators and staff about Aspen as our system. And I'm wondering, the last time we evaluated, if that's what we should continue using. Seems like we're going to have to renew here. But when was the last time we evaluated tools on the market for this purpose?
I know it has not been done since I've been here, which is only going into my third year.
Same member, okay.
Yeah, so I don't know the answer to that necessarily, but, and I have not heard any issues with the software itself.
Member Agna, do you have?
Well, my memory is that it was at least 20 years ago. So, I mean, it's been a really long time that we went to Aspen. Maybe I'm exaggerating 20 years, but it's probably in some minute somewhere that we could figure it out, but it's been a long time, very long.
And I can check with our data person, who would probably have that information.
Well, I guess the deeper question underpinning Member Stein's question is, is it time for us to look at alternatives? And, Dr. Bonner?
Well, student management systems, I mean...
They're all expensive.
They're all expensive. It would be a significant amount of money to change over the systems. And we know in terms of technology, technology is only as good as the user. So we've been, true. So we've been training people on the technology. The most, the one that a lot of districts use is Power School, which just had that serious cyber attack, and it's one that I'm familiar with. However, Aspen was a benefit to us this year because they had, when we switched over to the new IEP, it was one of the, considered one of the best systems to be able to do that new IEP. So, you know, although people complain about the systems, you know, it doesn't directly affect teachers in terms of the attendance and some other things. Our report carding is in that system. It houses quite a bit of information. And that would be a serious cost. That would be a capital, that would be a capital project to change over something such as that. But if that's something that this body is interested in us reviewing and analyzing next year and getting cost differentials and seeing what's the better tool to use, we'll be glad to do that after we get through the budget season and negotiations. Did I, was I right about that, Bobby? After we get through the budget season and negotiations? Okay, she's smiling. Okay, that's a good sign.
And I'm saying yes.
Member Weisenfreud?
First of all, Mayor, my apologies. I pulled up the charter, and of course, you're right about the term of office. So just wanted to say that for the record. Should have known better. It's late. Having dealt with a lot of big systems, information gathering and producing systems like this, I do agree it's best practice to review it periodically and to have it be part of the strategic plan. But I think given, it's my opinion that given all the issues we're dealing, I know that to change from one system to another is a huge deal. It's very disorienting, takes a ton of training. And I think the last thing we need right now is to have even less stability around something. So I would not, you know, recommend we go in that direction right now. But I do agree that it's best practice to continually evaluate the tools that we're using, and that's what I need to say.
Thank you. Member Gezi?
As a teacher who made complaints about Aspen, I would say that I'd make complaints about any operating system that I have to learn how to do to make report cards. I mean, it took me like four report cards to finally learn how to do Ctrl-D so I could set things. So a lot of the complaints, I think, come when you are faced with teaching and then learning a new system that, you know, you get a half-day training in the beginning of the year, and maybe you talk about it in a teacher meeting later on. But it takes a good two, three, four years to get trained to feel your way around. So those issues will come if we adopt a new system or not. And I think I agree with what Anat said about, you know, let's look at it. But for now, I think it's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Member Stein?
Yeah, I was hoping Bobby could let us know, so essentially, we're transferring between budget lines. Given the tightness of the budget, what are we not getting in order to pay for this? So like the $20,000 in the hardware line, what was that budgeted to purchase? And, you know, what's the trade-off here that we're talking about?
And I have to admit that I anticipated that question. And then it went out of my day, so I don't have that for you right now. Yeah, I just, I don't have that. But I did anticipate it. Doesn't help you tonight. And the only other thing I would say is that, I mean, we have to, we have to have a system, so we can't not have the software or the other softwares that came before it that are already in place. I think really the question in this transfer itself is that we did have the additional nursing software that was previously covered by a grant that came into play. No one knew at the time, we didn't have a health director, that that software wouldn't be covered in the grant. And then we had another Google workshop, and I see Kate Zach is still on here. I don't know if she wants to speak to that or not. But the Google Workspace was, I think, an additional cost within that line, which is something that we're not used to having. I don't know if that helps any.
Okay. Any other questions on this transfer?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, I think we need a motion.
Yeah, motion. I make a motion to approve the budget transferred $20,000.
I'll second.
Which is made by Member Agna, I think it was seconded by Member LaBoutte.
Davis.
Davis.
I'm sorry, Member Davis. No further discussion, then roll call, please.
Member LaBoutte?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shera?
Yes.
Member Gezi?
Yes.
Member Weisenfreud?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to reports. Dr. Bonner, superintendent report.
So I will make this as brief as possible, brevity. You should have it in your board docs now. So over the past three weeks, there has been a significant number of executive orders that have unnerved school leaders. It is important that we reserve a sense of calm and provide clear, fact-based information as it becomes available. In most cases, this will result in waiting for further clarification or official guidance. I have turned to the Attorney General's Office, DESI, and MAS, as well as our district council for direction and guidance. Many of the executive orders are in conflict with Massachusetts laws and local policy. There is little clarity to the effects of how these executive orders may affect our funding. Our community may be concerned about losing federal funding if we are not in compliance with executive orders. The federal funding we currently receive through the federal funding streams are in the entitlement grants such as Title I, II, III, IV, and our IDEA grants, which were created by Congress and are controlled by Congress. and are controlled by Congress for now. MPS currently receives $1,397,894 in federal funds through these grant programs. A majority of this funding targets low income students, students of color, English language learners, and children with disabilities. Just for an overall total, all of our federal grants mount up to $1,750,446. Another concern is the Medicaid reimbursement that is funded through the federal government that we receive for certain medically necessary services provided to students in a school setting. This funding source is used to replenish the Special Education Stabilization Fund that was recently established. Prospects of dismantling the Department of Education would have limited effects on what is taught in schools. MPS curriculum is guided by state and national standards and decided at the local level. Currently, the Department of Education oversees the federal streams of grants, federal student loans and financial aid for higher ed, collects data on student achievement and statistics, and enforces anti discrimination laws. It is the current administration's plan to move education under the control of individual states. Meanwhile, it is important to continue to protect our students and maintain a safe and supportive environment for them. I will continue to monitor and keep the school community abreast. Lastly, I just want to update where we are on the backlog minutes. In August, we said we need about 20 months. We are almost about halfway through. And so we have one, two, four, five, six. Six categories or areas in which we are backlogged in our minutes. So the school committee minutes, we are about 73.75% complete. For the Student Advisory Council, we are about 65.38% complete. The executive session minutes, we are 96.97% complete. Negotiating team, we're about 19.48%. We're working on it. The COVID ad hoc committee, we really need to address that. We have nine that we need to work on. No one wants to seem to want to do those, but we'll work on those. And then the superintendent search is 83.33%. So we feel that if we keep with the pace that we have, maybe within 10 months or so, we will be caught up, we hope. Okay, so I wanted to update you on that. So that's it? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, the mayor. Sorry.
Thank you for all of that work on on that hard project. Clearly, you see a hand that I can't see.
Okay, Emily.
You can. Yeah, just a question. The ad hoc or ad hoc committee on COVID, who will approve those minutes?
Andrea laughed. I was just about to offer up your name. It's gonna be tricky to do those. However, though, at least by by laws, we need to have drafts.
Drafts, okay.
So tricky. Yeah. That's another story. But the nice thing is that we have electronic copies of some of this this stuff, you know, in terms of the videos, so which we all we're trying to link. Cassie has started doing that, linking that into the document. So not to have you all sit through that and watch them to and say, yeah, that's that's it. Just remember that the minutes really are just a kind of a quick summary look that you met. And these were the the key points. And then if there was any votes, those votes were definitely listed. Thank you. Recorded. So.
So potentially, they would be coming to us for approval?
They would be.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And congratulations on making some progress.
Yes, I have to tell you, between Cassie, Michelle, we also had some assistance with the tax write off program. We had someone helping us there. And the mayor's office in terms of Sydney assisted with some of these documents. So it's it's been a task and, you know, trying to find things. And so thank you for having patience because this is something we, you know, we all inherited. We're all new and this was kind of left in our pockets, so.
Thank you for all of that work. Member Stein.
Yeah, just two questions on that. I know we had at least two subcommittees that we may be referring to on the COVID. We had the COVID ad hoc policy subcommittee. And then there was no negotiations. We had another one. Were we talking which one were we talking about in terms of the minutes?
That the that the ad, sorry, yeah, ad hoc COVID subcommittee. Because it or not subcommittee, but advisory. Because it it no longer exists. So I was asking who would approve those minutes? The negotiations subcommittee would approve their own minutes.
Okay, and my other question was if we've gotten any requests for records we haven't been able to fill. And the reason I'm asking that is because the letter we got from the Attorney General said that they were done with our nonsense and would start fining us when we couldn't fulfill our obligation, right? It was like $1,000 per, you know, issue or whatever. So how many records requests have we gotten since we got that letter? I'm trying to assess our liability here of what kind of fines we might be looking at.
So and Cassie, you can prime in too. But we haven't received anything additional from that initial request that caused us to do all of those executive executive session minutes. And they have been approved, but we haven't released many of them. So but at least we could document that they exist and that we have the date of approval and we just haven't released it. So we haven't received any additional ones. We've received quite a few public records requests, but it did not pertain to the minutes.
Do we have any minute requests that we haven't been able to fill?
As of as of today, no, we have not.
All the backlog minutes, when they're approved, there's a date added of the approval to them. And then they're uploaded to the city website. So the public has access to them.
Okay, moving on to the Business Administrator Report. And Bobby.
We lose her?
No, I'm here. It's really windy here. So really, there's not been, you know, a whole lot of changes since I last reviewed our monthly report. Our overspent areas still remain in the special education lines as well as the homeless and foster care, transportation, substitutes, and out of district tuitions. So I'm happy to put the document up and go over line by line. But given the amount of time or where we are with time, I don't know that that's the will. Either way, I'm happy to do whatever. But I will also just say to Annette that I know she's new and I'm happy to take a call or we could meet together so that we could review, you know, what that process looks like and how the reports go and everything.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know I tend to be long winded when we go over, you know, line by line. But I'm happy to do that if that's what folks want.
I don't, I'm not seeing.
And I also would like to add that I did put together a revolving fund and the grants funds that I then neglected to send to Cassie. So those didn't get put in there. But I'll bring those to Budget and Property so that they have that. One of the requests at Budget and Property was to have the actual grant so they could see line by line. And for tonight, I only had the actual awards that we had. So I think if I bring those to Budget and Property, we can maybe review those next time at the full school committee meeting. But again, that's up to the will of the committee.
All right, Member Stein.
Yeah, Bobby, I just had a I don't I don't need to go through every single line. But I'm curious. Actually, don't know what the line number is. We're on page seven here. It's the top portion. It's the one we've sort of talked about before, I believe. So the fourth line down and the fifth line down, right? So these are a couple of categories where we're already at, you know, multiples over. Can you give us some more details about these and and where where the projections are based on this over? Like where where will we land based on what we know?
Yep, so right now, if you if you look at those, and again, he's on page seven, the very top of that document. The overspent amount also has, if you look to the left of that column, you'll see there's still an encumbrance. So that's something we're monitoring as we go. And then same with the next line down. Those are huge, huge amounts, but we're monitoring those encumbrances. And then where we think we can make that up, and I say think because there's a lot, we have extraordinary circuit breaker that we might be entitled to, and that's coming up. The claiming is coming up soon for that. So we'll have more information around that. And then we did get in our regular circuit breaker additional monies, not additional, but more money than we're typically used to. So if we have to tap into that, we can do that. So that's those are the huge lines right there.
So Bobby, I can't remember how this works. So if on the extraordinary, do we get it for the same fiscal year? Or do we have to wait to get that for the following?
The extraordinary, we have to use within this fiscal year.
Great, great, okay.
And then the other, we we reserve for the next year, correct?
And do you have any sense of what we might get in the extraordinary? Like what's our best case possibility on what we could get out of it?
I don't, I can't. I can't answer that yet because we have to do the whole claim form and the whole. I don't want to answer that yet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions for Bobby?
Just so then next month, would we go through in further detail if we have time? Since because this was going to be the quarterly one. Oh, next month is budget. Never mind. We're going to go through it in detail just differently.
Okay. Okay, we're all set with Bobby. Moving on to some quick subcommittee updates. Member Gacy and rules and policy.
I believe that we talked already about that, so.
Okay, you're all set?
I told you what went on.
Okay, sorry, Member Stein, Budget and Property.
Sure, I'll be brief. We had our first meeting since Member Weizenfreund was appointed to the committee and to the subcommittee. We elected a new chair. I was grateful that I was elected as chair. And we had a number of fruitful conversations about the work we want to do together and how we want to do that work together. One of the things that Member Seraphy Cox mentioned was keeping track of the things that we're doing and how we're doing it. Another area where we spent some considerable time was thinking about what our role in the upcoming budget process is and how we can be most useful. We also discussed how we're going to collaboratively produce our agendas and be in touch with one another regarding those administrative steps. And I'm pretty excited about the work we're going to do and how we laid things out. And there was a lot that happened. I don't know if there's other things you you all would like to mention, the other members, that I'm forgetting.
Hello, okay. Okay. Moving on to future business topics.
Future discussion.
Member LaBounty.
And these may already be on the roadmap, but I just just want to make sure that we that we do get to them, that they're that they're somewhere. I think what we've what we've heard many times is is about the reading plan. And so I think I need a refresher, and I don't know if the rest of the committee does, on what is our sort of reading plan for the future? I know we have the new curriculum director. And so I think there was going to be work done on that. So I just a status update on the kind of what we're what we're thinking because I think people want to hear that. And also, this will probably come through the budget work, but it would be great to know how many known IEPs are not being met for whatever reason, like staffing issues, other things, illness. I mean, we talked about how things impact the ability to serve. So just if we know that, because that that will impact where we direct money in the budget, right? So but I so I thought it might come up through budget process anyway. And also, as Member Stein said, we talked about and the budget and property, like how can we be valuable to this committee during the budget process? So so for us to think about and maybe have that conversation about, are there ways that this body wants us to work with them in that process? Do you want a presentation on what we heard in the budget and property? Or because we kind of had the same meeting twice. Like we'd have it in budget and property, then we'd have it here. And so I just, you know, we were trying to figure out, how do we actually be valuable to this larger committee? So having that discussion of how that might work, I don't. And I don't have ideas about that necessarily, but how we can be helpful. And also, how I know I'm a bit of a broken record on this, but how can we think about working with the city council to do that work? I know they didn't want a working group and that sort of thing. But how how can we have that deeper conversation either internally about budget or or, you know, the finance communities get or something that I think we need to do better to be more collaborative, you know? And I'd love to think about how we could do that.
Okay, thank you. Member Hennessy.
Thank you. I'm going to reiterate the IEPs. I'd like to have some sort of a meeting or discussion on because I hear anecdotally and then I hear, you know, some of our IEPs aren't being met. I'd like to have some report on that. I'd like to, I know, I agree with Member LaBounty about working with the city council. I actually loved her idea of working together. If we could revisit that. And then lastly, I don't know how to do this, but having a devoted.
Recording stopped.
Hold on.
Recording in progress.
That was crazy.
This is it's not necessarily an item as much as I'd like us to figure out how we continue to be nimble and make sure we have room in our agenda to talk about how we are being both pro creative proactive and reactive. Unfortunately, we'll have to be to some of the federal stuff going on. And so, you know, I don't know. It's an agenda item as much as making sure we have room to talk about what's going on and how we're supporting our community, our school community.
Okay, thank you. Member Gacy.
I think for most of us. I think for most of us on this school committee, grew up at a time when there were no cellphones and social media, and it is mind boggling to me how the schools are impacted by that and bullying and whatever. So there is new guidance from, and a toolkit from the Attorney General, the state attorney about cellphone and social media in schools and along with some sample policies. And I think that it's an important issue for us to address and would like to bring it up in rules and policy.
Okay. Thank you. Member Agna.
I agree that it's challenging to have a meeting, a subcommittee meeting, and then have it repeated in the school committee meeting. And I, I feel especially concerned for those who come to the subcommittees, I'm thinking of the curriculum one, curriculum instruction. They come and present, and then my thought always is, oh, I wish the whole school committee would hear this. So I, I understand that concern, and I, I don't know how we get around it because there is that structure of subcommittees. But it's, it always strikes me that we, we are asking particularly our staff to do things twice. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned that we have a personnel subcommittee, the superintendent evaluation committee, that is public. I am going to explore that, I plan to explore that, but I wonder if we could get a legal advice on that from our attorney to have that more private? And to have the full committee in the executive session hear our results for, because as a person who's been a personnel, a person who's been employed, the idea of having that in a public venue just doesn't sit right with me. And so I will, I, I would hope that we could ask our attorney for advice on that and find a way that we can have what we are obligated to do. It's part of our duty to hire and superintendent and supervise a superintendent. However, this feels really awkward to do it in public.
Okay, thank you. Okay, hold on. So Member Gacy, you already went your Gacy Lane notes.
I what?
Your hand's still up, but.
Oh, no. I'm just eating.
Okay, so I'm going to go to Member Stein, and then I'm going to go to you, Member Miller. I see you.
My train of thought's gone to some other places, and sorry, it's my hand, sorry. It's getting late. I just, you know, I really appreciate a lot of the ideas that have been offered. I think they're great. I'm really grateful for you all for raising them. And I wanted to actually make a motion to refer the policies that Member Gacy mentioned regarding cellphones and social media and bullying to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee to take a look at.
That's what I was sort of aiming at, thank you, Michael.
Is there a second?
Yes, me.
Oh, okay, great.
Holly.
Holly, Gacy.
Okay, roll call on that motion, please, and then I'll go to you, Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shara.
Yes.
Member Gacy.
Yes.
Member Weisenthal.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Hennessy.
Great. Member Miller?
Is Member, no.
Hennessy not here?
We couldn't hear her answer.
She did say yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBoutte?
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay. Member Miller?
So a constituent has raised the question of are discussing with, along with the superintendent? And again, including feedback from principals, that we as a body talk more about whatever funds we have, how do we want to dispense them? How do we want to use them as opposed to arguing about whether we have more money or not? That with the money that we do have, how do we want to spend it? And I think more conversation and discussion among us, along with superintendent, about how do we want to use whatever limited funds we have? I think that it's important for us as a body to have a conversation about that, including, of course, the input from the principals and from staff. But I think we also need to talk about that. We have a certain amount of money at some point. Where do we want to spend it? Where do we want to focus on? What are our, what are our priorities? So I just think that's something that we as a body need to have conversations about. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, I do hope that's how the, the discussion will go. Member Stein, then Member Agna.
I remembered the other thing I wanted to say, but before I say it, I, I just want to point out that we had exactly those conversations all through May, June, and into July, because we have to vote on a line item budget. And we heard numerous presentations about why we should go one way or the other with the input of the AL team. Alternatives were presented. We had a very rich debate about that. I actually take the thrust of that suggestion to be only discuss those things and don't ask for more money, which goes against the eight to two vote we just took tonight. So I don't know that that's where the body actually is. And that is one view, and I respect that that's one view of how budgeting could operate, but that's only one view, and we're not restricted to that by any rules or policies of our own making or by the cities. So respectfully to that constituent, there's a lot of hours of footage where we can watch those very conversations happen, and it's one we're going to have to make anyway because we have to vote on the final budget. And the final budget is the money we actually get. So we're doing that. But I don't think that's all we should do. And tonight, my colleagues overwhelmingly agreed with that. The thing I wanted to say was about utilizing staff time effectively and utilizing subcommittees effectively. If there is a topic that is coming before the entire body and there has been a robust discussion at a subcommittee meeting, we should commit to watching those before we have our larger discussion. That's the homework that we can do so that when the, the experts come again before us, they don't have to regurgitate the same presentation. We can actually ask them informed questions that we might have that weren't addressed in that subcommittee before we take a vote. That will speed up meetings and eliminate the redundancy, and it's a power that we all already possess and we could use. It might be helpful to have the Zoom recordings, right? Because this is not on NOM, it's hard to find, unless you ask for them. Cassie helpfully sends them out very quickly if you do ask her. But maybe we could just start a practice where we share those to the larger committee so that we can do our homework before the same issues come before the whole body again. That could be something we track as well, it could be part of our conversation. But to me, that would be a good way to respect the staff time and also to utilize that expertise in the best way to make decisions.
Member Agna.
Actually, I did mention that at last meeting, when we had an amazing presentation from Kate Zach about the technology program, I did say, watch it because it's really great so we don't have to ask her to come back and give more time. But I also think that I would think the public will be able to see more of what's going on in our schools if we do it in the school committee and not in the subcommittee. I don't know how many people actually would watch the subcommittee Zooms, recordings of these presentations. Perhaps there are some very diligent people, but I think that there, we have a pretty wide audience now. So I would love to think of ways that we could just have one time in our school committee meeting. And I also wanted to echo what Member Miller said, that I think that constituent also wrote a letter to the editor. It was interesting for me to read that because when I was principal and we had budget limitations, we often sat down as our school council and thought, okay, we have this pot of money, and how could we do it differently? And I think that that's really something that we have to think about because, you know, we, we would get to the point where we'd say, well, we have X number of people who are licensed in our building, and how could we more creatively have them serve kids, serve students? So it is something that I think that that constituent posed in that letter to the editor, and I was, when I read it, I thought, oh, yeah, we used to do that in our school council because there were limitations to our budget, I think, every year except for one in my 24 years. So this could be an opportunity, given the dire situation we may be in or we are in as far as funding, to really have that kind of, that's not my job anymore. That would be, it's certainly not my job as school committee, but it might be the job of principals and the curriculum director and just sort of go, maybe we could do this a little differently with the pot of money that we have. So I just say it, and I think that I'm glad that you brought it up, Member Miller, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm going to make a motion that we extend our meeting, unfortunately, to Member Weisenthal. We have to do this at 11 o'clock. So I'm just anticipating, so.
12.
12? 12 o'clock? 12 o'clock. I'm sorry.
Motion made by Member Agna to suspend rules and extend the time to 12 o'clock, seconded by.
All second.
By Member Seraphy Cox. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Agna?
Reluctantly, yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Casey?
Yes.
Member Weisenthal?
Uh huh.
Yes. Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
No.
Member Miller?
Yeah.
Member LaBoutte?
No.
Okay. I have just one other item that I, I am questioning whether we need to revisit the subpolicy BEDH, so.
People are groaning, I don't know what that means.
I was about to tell you. So that's our public comment policy. So we had incorporated into that an accommodation for either someone who needed interpretive services or for a communication disability, and which I believe we discussed meant like a, a speech communication disability.
Yeah.
Which was not how it was used this evening. So if that is not the understanding of the committee, I would like to, I would like to know that, and, or if this needs to go back to the committee. But my, I thought we had discussed that it was if someone had difficulty with speech and so needed accommodations of doubling their time.
And also interpretation, I think, wasn't that?
Yes, interpretation, yes, so, and yes, if they needed interpretation, then that need, needed, needs to notify us 48 hours in advance so we could provide interpretation So I don't know if people want to put this on the agenda, they wanted to go to, to rules and policy again, or if, Member Gacy, I don't know if you remember and could speak to what the interpretation is of that.
I, I was surprised that they used that particular one because it didn't seem like their speech problems were problematic. It just seemed to be an extension of time, so.
Member Hennessy?
I don't, I, I don't want to be put in the position of deciding whether or not someone has a disability, and nor do I think any of us have that. So I would, maybe I was surprised, but I, I don't think we should be deciding that. If they are saying that they have a disability, I think we need to trust it. However, if we want to bring it to rules and policy for a more specific guidance, I'm, I'm totally happy with that, too. But I don't think, I, I think people have disabilities, and sometimes it's not apparent, even communication disabilities. I actually feel strongly about that. I don't want to be put in that position, and I don't think we should be judging that.
Okay. Member Weisenthal?
Yeah, I agree with Member Hennessy on this completely, and I also think that, you know, even if tonight's, two people, even if it wasn't exactly by the book, we lost six minutes of time total. So I think given that it's now 11 o'clock and we've been here since 6 o'clock, I, I don't think those six minutes mean anything, and I think that, given the current climate, it would really not land well, I think, to make any kind of changes around that. Just my opinion.
Okay, Member LaBoutte?
I agree that we shouldn't be deciding if someone has a disability.
I can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I agree that it, we shouldn't be deciding if someone has a disability, but I do believe everyone should follow process. Because I think it's a very slippery slope. So if we're asking people who require interpretive services to give us notice to provide that, then I think we can ask people to provide us with information to say, yes, I need extra time for whatever purpose. Because I can see that this would, this is that same thing about being able to, you know, you know, I understand that we talked about allowing people a certain set of time so plenty of people could speak, right? That was part of it so that it wasn't that, wasn't monopolized by things. And I, yes, a few other minutes doesn't mean anything, but a few other minutes does potentially prevent other people. So I guess I would ask that everybody follow a process for that and not just decide, because we can't, I don't want to decide if you have a disability, but I also don't want there to be a mass set of disabilities, if you will. And that's my feeling.
Okay, Member Agna?
I won't belabor this, but I, I was the one that allowed for those six minutes in two cases. And I think it was my experience as an educator that that wasn't something that I needed to belabor or have anybody have to say what their disability was. And so that's the part that I, I felt like, okay, you have a disability and that's what you're requiring. But I also agree with the slippery slope. So I just, I, I think, let's just see how it plays out, I guess, in terms of, you know, just genuinely trusting that people who say they need extra time, it's because they need extra time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll just quickly say that the, it looks like the version of this policy that's in board docs does not seem to be the most updated version.
Okay, you are correct. I also noticed that.
Can I make a motion that we adjourn?
Nope.
Wait, wait.
Oh, no.
We're not. Okay, future business and meeting dates.
I mean, yes. Okay, sorry. Go to executive.
Rules and Policy, February 26 at 5:00 p.m. on Zoom, Negotiating Subcommittee, February 27, 4:30 at JFK. Curriculum Subcommittee, March 3, 5:15 on Zoom, Negotiating Subcommittee, March 6, 4:30 p.m. at JFK. Budget and Property Subcommittee, March 10, 5:00 p.m. on Zoom. Next full school committee meeting, March 13, 6:30 p.m., hybrid. Rules and Policy, March 19, 5:00 p.m. on Zoom. Negotiating Subcommittee, March 20, 4:30 at JFK. Special School Committee meeting for this, for the, an additional budget meeting, March 27 at 5:30 on Zoom. And if needed, an additional special, we're holding a place for a special meeting on April 2nd at 5:30 on Zoom. And now, we are not going to adjourn, we are going to.
I have, I can make the motion.
You can do it, great.
I will make a motion pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, Purpose 7, for the purpose of reviewing and approving executive session minutes to comply with the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, 22F and G, to move into executive session. And also, to move into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
Okay, motion's been made, and seconded. Seconded by Member Hennessy, Chair does so declare. So we are going into executive session, we will be adjourning from executive session, we will not come back into open sessions. So anyone who's still with us will be saying, good night to you, as we go into executive session. Roll call, please.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Sharra?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weisenthal?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Okay. Good night, everyone, we are now going into executive session.